Everybody, welcome to our regular Bellevue City Council meeting for July 18th, 2022. Our deputy mayor is not here tonight, so we have six of us. City Clerk, would you like to do the roll call?
Yes, please, thank you. Mayor Robinson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Newenhouse has been excused this evening. Councilmember Barksdale. Councilmember Lee.
Yeah.
Councilmember Robertson.
I'm here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmember Zahn.
Here.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robertson, will you lead us in the flag salute, please?
Certainly. Everyone, please rise and join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, any opposed? Okay. City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for oral communications?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There are seven pre-assigned speakers or pre-registered speakers this evening. And before we get started calling names, I'd like to remind the public that oral communications is for a total of no more than 30 minutes. And speakers will be allowed up to three minutes to speak, and a maximum of three persons are allowed to speak to any one particular topic. And with that, I will call our first speaker, who is Court Wilson. And I believe Mr. Wilson is in person. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, and Councilmembers Zahn, Barksdale, Robertson, Lee, and Stokes. Good to be here again with you. You all know me by now, I'm a resident of Lake Hills neighborhood, Bellevue. And I'm here tonight representing a group called People for Climate Action, Bellevue Chapter. Last Tuesday evening, we were privileged to receive an advanced copy of the Environmental Stewardship Plan update for July. Thank you very much to city staff for forwarding that to us and others. We took the week to review that plan, and we sent you all an email earlier this afternoon that summarizes our comments, and we'll get into all of them tonight. I would merely like to read the closing two paragraphs of that letter, just for the record. So it's in the meeting notes tonight, for tonight's meeting. That email to you all concludes to say this: "To summarize, we see that there is much work yet to be done in Bellevue to hit the city's 2030 emissions reduction commitment. Bellevue is not currently on a trajectory to get there. We also know that the citizens of Bellevue aren't aware of the complexities of the climate issues, and very few are aware of specific actions that a city can potentially take to impact climate change. Yet, the city has been polling residents even recently to see what they think should be done. Instead, city officials need to, number one, better understand those complexities themselves; number two, educate the public on how specific city actions needed to, on these specific city actions needed to effectively bring down emissions community-wide; and, number three, implement such impactful actions rapidly. We see other U.S. cities effectively lowering emissions by doing just that. In conclusion, it's clear that the city must urgently add several more well-qualified staff and other resources to tackle greenhouse gas emissions. As the United Nations Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change warns us, global warming must be held below 1.5 degrees centigrade. Without rapid implementation of policy shifts at all levels of government, but especially in cities, that dangerous threshold will likely be crossed on or about 2030." That's the summary of our statement. We appreciate your reading through the message we sent to you earlier, and thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. The next speaker on the list is Giovanna Aris.
I was born at Overlake Hospital in 2004 and have lived in Bellevue my entire life. I just graduated from Sammamish High School, and I plan to take a gap year to focus exclusively on cricket, and that's how much I love the sport. I spent the last two weeks representing the USA in the Cricket West Indies Rising Stars Women's U-19 Championship in Trinidad and Tobago. We were the underdogs and were given the little chance to compete against cricket-playing countries like Jamaica, Guyana, Barbados, and Trinidad. However, they way underestimated the USA. Team USA went undefeated in the tournament, blowing out the home team Trinidad in the finals by a big margin. Per the commentator, when the winning runs were scored, quote, "USA women's team have been dominant in so many sports: track and field, soccer, basketball. Why not consider the possibility of the USA team becoming among the top in the women's cricket," end quote. Chevron-Herine Chandler-Paul, one of the best batters after her played cricket, and someone with exceptional coaching credentials, took on the assignment to be the head coach of USA women's team. A few weeks back, wait, a few weeks back, I think Coach Chandler-Paul researched well, and he knows exactly what he's doing. If someone with Coach Chandler-Paul's experience is so optimistic about the future of USA women's cricket, I think the cricketing world needs to pay attention. USA has qualified to play at the Women's U-19 World Cup in South Africa in the next six months. Once again, we will be considering underdogs, and once again, I am confident we will prove everyone wrong. When I presented to this council in November last year, I mentioned my dreams, that I want to be on the USA team, that in 2025 will win our first World Cup, and in 2028 win a gold medal at the Olympics. I want to be the best cricketer in the world, and I want to be the next Mia Hamm in what she did for soccer. Last year, I was the only woman cricketer playing hardball cricket in the area. Since January this year, 25 girls have been practicing diligently and are now playing games on the weekends. I'm hoping some of them will join me soon in regional and national tournaments. We want to do more for our country, we want to win Cricket World Cups and Olympic gold medals, and having played with highly skilled young women cricketers in this country, along with our sport culture that poses, oh, poses no limits for women, I can assure you that this dream will be achieved.
Okay.
But for our region to-
I have to stop you right there.
Have four more words.
So go ahead and say them, and then, thank you so much.
But for our region to contribute, we need your help.
Okay.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Yatin Ros.
My name is Yatin Ros, and I happen to be Giovanna's father, and a proud father. If you haven't noticed, this is regarding the park's levy and the funding allocation for cricket, and that's what the request is for. I've lived here in Bellevue since 1995, and with my wife Jane, we've raised three children in the city. I was part of the Seattle Cricket Club in the '90s, the very first cricket club in the area. And back then, we played in the British Canadian Bay League in Vancouver, and then the Northwest League when that got started in the Seattle area. Back then, we played in a beautiful cricket field in Taquilla at the Fort Dent Park. Unfortunately, 2003, this park was leased by King County to starfire sports for soccer that we all know and love, the Sounders Track Train there as well. We also played at Marymore Park on the same stretch of land, which is now being considered for the cricket stadium. So there's some history with cricket there, yes, we played cricket on that strip of land. More recently, I played at Robinsford Cricket Field in Bellevue, which is, according to school district reconstruction plans, we could lose that field again to some turf soccer fields on that property. For the last two decades, I've been a strong advocate for youth sports in general in Bellevue. I coached Rattenfield with the Cascade Striders and Speed Unlimited from 2006 to 2010. I coached my sons and then my daughter Giovanna's Lake Hills youth soccer teams from 2005 to 2017. I was a Lake Hills select soccer coach for several years. I am still now a USA Soccer Federation de-licensed coach. I worked with Jubilee Reach, and several players on my soccer teams have needed support over the years. So I'm all in for youth sports, especially for children for whom sports has had an impact on who they are and how they view themselves. I understand space constraints and for facilities and funding constraints, but we need to balance the support for our various sports with the changing demographics that we have in this region. Cricket has grown exponentially in our region. In the '90s, when we played cricket, when I played cricket, there were only six teams. Today, between NWC and ARCL, our two organized leagues here, we have close to 200 teams. In addition, we have four youth academies that have teams at multiple levels, as well as women's team that Giovanna mentioned she's been coaching. So there are quite a bit of cricket going on here. So we need to help, we need your help in providing a diverse community, the cricket facilities, we need to thrive. On Giovanna's USA Cricket bio, she says she is from Bellevue, Washington. Hopefully someday, folks in the cricketing world would know Bellevue as a birthplace of great cricketers. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Betsy Hummer.
Hi there. I'm Betsy Hummer, 14541 Southeast 26th Street, Lake Hills East Gate neighborhood, there's a little slash there. With the sun setting of the East Bellevue Community Council, I urge council boards, commissions, and staff to pay close attention to the pragmatic requests of people of Bellevue when they first surface. EBCC had disapproval power over certain land use decisions, which gave them a legislative clout. Neighborhoods and their associations do not have any particular legislative power and depend on their representatives to enact their wills for them. At the East Gate Neighborhood Walk, we heard about the neighborhood movement to improve Newport Way. Residents formed a coalition, bought green t-shirts, and diligently attended council, board, and commission meetings to improve the safety of a 100-year-old thoroughfare. Their advocacy led to the recently completed Newport Way CIP, and a YouTube video was created showcasing the right way to accomplish a project. It just shouldn't be so difficult. And it shouldn't fall just to the people of Bellevue to carry the weight to accomplish a necessary improvement. It should be obvious to their elected, appointed, and hired public servants to recognize the validity of the initial request and act on it without their having to buy new t-shirts and attend every single council meeting. I hope City Hall pays close attention to the comments and concerns of people of Bellevue during these neighborhood walks. Wilberton is concerned about increasing fast cut-through traffic, crime, out-of-scale new homes, and proposed increased density. They also wish to clarify the inaccurate moniker of the commercial development district known as Wilberton Vision. The commercial area south of Lake Bellevue, nay, Sturtavent, next to the railroad, was named Midlakes in 1904 by L.D. Godsey, and is now mysteriously called the Wilberton Vision. Even the PSE electrical substation at Northeast 8th and 140th Avenue that was approved by EBCC is the Midlakes Substation. Wilberton was at Southeast 8th and 405 and extends to the Kelsey Creek Farm in northwest, not down to Home Depot. Please rename the Wilberton Vision to reflect the historical Midlakes name and reassure Wilbertonites office towers will not be coming to their residential neighborhood. Again, I hope City Hall pays close attention to the people of Bellevue at the upcoming neighborhood walks and through the presentations they do make to City Council. Let's not make them buy t-shirts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hummer. The next speaker on the list is Sally Lawrence, and she is joining us virtually. Ms. Lawrence, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you. My name is Sally Lawrence, and I've lived in northeast Bellevue for 28 years. My address is on file. Thank you, Mayor Robinson and City Council, for this opportunity to speak. I'm in support of the proposed park levy that would be on the ballot in the fall. At this time of unprecedented growth in Bellevue, the city needs to secure additional parks and open space to serve the burgeoning population. During the first and the worst year of the pandemic before we had vaccines, I visited Red Town Trailhead across the street from the Coal Creek Natural Area a number of times and was impressed with the jammed parking area. People were using the trails for running, hiking, taking families on walks, and generally enjoying the outstanding natural beauty of both the county park and the city park. Even though the pandemic has eased, these trails continue to be very popular. Health authorities have told us to stay prepared for future pandemics in our lifetimes, and these spaces will be incredibly valuable as we adjust to some new realities. Please consider very seriously the Park Department's recent survey of citizen priorities as reflected in the updated Parks and Open Space Plan. The plan points to open space, greenways, trails, nature, and wildlife corridors as the top priority. This park's levy is an investment in the future for all Bellevue residents, but it's particularly needed for residents of East Gate, Factoria, and South Bellevue, which are areas that are underserved by parks. In addition, the Coal Creek watershed is badly in need of buffer protection to protect the highly valued Coal Creek Natural Area and its small run of native salmon. As property becomes available, this park's levy will be critical in enabling the city to purchase land for parks. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. That is our third and final speaker in support of the parks levy item this evening. The next speaker on the list was Jegan Nemaney, and unfortunately, Mr. Nemaney, we won't be able to hear from you because you're the fourth speaker on that topic. I would encourage you to email your comments to council@bellevuea.gov. And our final speaker of the evening is Alex Zimmerman.
[speaking Spanish] And I want to speak right now about something because election very close, and red wall go bigger and bigger. What has happened with me before for many years, but right now, this is very unique. And I give you exactly point by point what's happened with Democrat mafia who acting like a Nazi rats. Is this exactly what's happened? Garbage, aggressive, very aggressive. Number one, King Country Council Balducci stopping me speak in every meeting. Sound Transit, I talk about $100, punch this him, 10 seconds, out. Another guy from Sound Transit, a chair, a black Nazi, you know what that mean? He cut me in first, five second. You understand about talking? Another guy, what is very unique, you know what this means, situation except, exactly unique, is King Country Council Peter Von Rechenbauer remaining from your presenting his meeting, you know what this mean? He never have in public hearing, never. He more dangerous than Democrat, he's a real Nazi. For 30 years, he's in this chair. Next, what is I haven't explained to you? I go in Seattle Council and speak every day, they never show my face. You understand? Guy, how is this possible? So many idiot, you know what this mean? Scared from one poor, poor, very poor man, Alex Zimmerman. Where is the reason for this? Everything what is I have is my two minute. I very appreciate you, so you have three minutes, this very unique, and you don't interrupt me, you did this before, but right now, very quiet. I don't know what has happened, maybe COVID changed you. It's okay with me. Right now, I speak to everybody who listen to me. 250,000 idiot who live in Bellevue into 2 million idiot who live in King Country. Stop voting for Democrat. They are real Nazi, a real bandita. They want make from us a concentration camp. They more dangerous than Nazi or communist. Only pure idiot can vote for Democrat now. They just bring us to collapse, a big collapse, and this collapse may become atomic war for another couple of years. It's exactly when we don't stop on this Democrat mafia bandita. Is this exactly what as I speak to you right now? They more dangerous than garbage rats from animal farm. So American knows this, civilized people knows this. Stand up decent people, stop voting for Democrat mafia from this bandita who totally destroy us life, fundamentally destroy American Constitution and us right. Stand up, America. Stand up, America, now. Stop vote for Democrat, this bandita Nazi. Thank you very much.
Okay, that is the end of our pre-registered list. We do still have a few minutes of oral communications. If there's anyone joining us here tonight who would like to speak to the council, please raise your hand. Again, not on support for the parks levy. We have reached the maximum number of that item. Anyone joining us online in Zoom, use star nine to raise your hand and indicate you'd like to speak. Okay, Mayor, I don't see any hands that close as oral calls.
Thank you. Okay, we're on to the report of the city manager, and I really appreciate this topic tonight because I asked that you give us a report out on police progress with some of the crime that we're experiencing right now, so I appreciate this. We don't typically take questions or comments from the council on the report of the city manager, but you're going to be doing a full presentation on August 1st in our last meeting that we can talk to you about anything we need to discuss, and we can submit emails after this. So, Mr. Miyake.
So thank you, Mayor, and council members. As you mentioned, we have Chief Shirley as well as his staff joining us this evening to give you the council and the viewing public a brief report on crime activity in the recently that we've been experiencing, as well as the police department's response to that. The Chief Shirley is also joined by some of his members, excuse me, some of his members of his staff, including Assistant Police Chief Pat Harpen, as well as Public Information Officer Megan Black. With that, if you want to step up, chief and staff, I'll turn it over to the chief to begin his presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. We're pleased to be here to report out and provide you with information on the crime trends we're seeing in the city and how we're responding to those crime trends. So what we plan to do is, we're going to break the information into two categories. One category is property crimes, which consist of shoplifting, burglary, demoted vehicle, those type of crimes. And the second category is crimes against persons, basically assault-type, aggravated assault-type incidents. So what you're seeing before you here is a property crime chart. And as you can see, this is a comparison from 2021, which is in blue, to 2022 currently, which is in green. And as you can see, overall, year-to-date, we're about 15.2% increase in crime as compared to last year, even though the two years are not really apples-to-apple comparison, but it certainly does give us a gauge. And the crimes that I've highlighted here speak to the increases that we've experienced. Shoplifting is one that we've experienced an increase in and are working very closely with our businesses and loss prevention coordinators. Also the same for MV thefts, which is motive vehicle thefts, and car prowls, which are car break-in. So that's the cause of the increase in our property crimes currently, but as you can also see, mail theft was something that we heard loud and clear for many, many months, and we really started to focus on that and have been able to get that decreased. Next slide. The second category is our crimes against persons. So that's typically your aggravated assaults, your assaults that happen at points in time. The overall increase there year-to-date is 12.9%. And as you can see, our aggravated assaults are actually down, and the aggravated assaults are the more serious type assaults that occur. Those are actually down, whereas our robberies are up a bit. And the reason for that is twofold. We've had, we certainly have had some armed robberies in the city, but we've also had a number of those are related to shoplifting. So when someone goes to a store and shoplifts, and then there's an attempt to detain them by security or the store staff, if that person resist and fight to get their way out of there, that is elevated up to a robbery. And so we have a number of those, which is causing that uptick. Our rapes have remained relatively the same, and to date, we have not had a homicide this year as of yet. So combining those two, our property crimes and our crimes against persons, we're experiencing about a 10.5% increase this year. And so what is your police department doing about it, and how are we responding to it? So our general philosophy we're using is simply called the P.I. Prevention, Intervention, and Enforcement. Prevention meaning we have a full-time crime analyst and crime coordinator who communicates with the community, the public, in regards to safety tips, educational tips, so that they can prevent themselves from being a victim of a car theft, or burglary, or anything of that nature. Intervention, we work closely with other service providers, so if we can steer somebody into some services, we will certainly do that so that they don't fall into or continuing a life of crime, if you will. And the last piece is enforcement. There certainly has to be accountability for people that decide they're going to come to the city and steal or rob or do whatever else. And so we work very, very closely with the prosecutor's office to make sure we're trying to get the appropriate charges for people that decide to do those types of things. Next slide. So we started to see, right coming out of COVID, just like every other city, excuse me, and across the region here in the state, we started to see an uptick in crime, whether it was property crime or others, but we certainly began to see an uptick. And so we knew that even though we were out there and enforcing things, we needed to up the ante. And so thus came the anti-crime initiative. And we publicize that to the public so that they would know what we're doing, but also to those who choose to come to our city and commit crimes, that we're not going to tolerate it, and we're going to do something about it. And so the anti-crime initiative basically involves high-visibility patrol, right? It's an all-hands-on-deck in a police department. It's our uniform patrol, it's our undercover officers, it's our detectives, you name it. And it's a coordinated effort where we identify hotspots based on crime analysis, is what we use on a daily basis, the officer's own experience working in the city, and feedback we get from the community. So those three things we use to address hotspots and issues in some of these areas. Some of the other things we did early on as well, in this region, catalytic converters, as I'm sure everybody knows, have been a main issue and challenge in the state of Washington, and quite frankly, across the country. And so we took a proactive move here in Bellevue and initiated the Catalytic Converter Task Force, which basically brought together a number of our surrounding agencies to collaborate with us. And basically what that does is share, detectives are sharing information because folks that decide to steal have no boundaries, right? And so we decided with the agencies around us, let's get together, share information, assist each other in investigation, and make some arrests. And I'm certainly happy to say, we have certainly made our share of arrests in regards to this issue. And secondly, just recently, we joined the Attorney General for the state, created the Organized Retail Theft Task Force. And so we joined that as well to work with the AG's office, because that links to some of our shoplifting increase, right? Because some of that is organized. And so we thought it was certainly in our best interest, Bellevue's best interest, to join that task force, which we have. Next slide. So this is just a snapshot of the anti-crime initiative results. So we've done a number of operations. And so what you see here is the north sector. And as you can see, in pretty much all the categories that we've been focusing on, from shoplifting to car theft to car prowls to burglaries, have gone down. Now, this is just a a short snapshot, probably starting in June, from about June to now. So it's only not even a couple of months yet. But this is promising, and this tells us that our focus is in the right direction. And so and we're doing that across the city, of course. And we also have our data dashboard that's up and running, and we're still making adjustments to that. But that will give our community a wealth of information beyond just crime, right? It will give them information on use of force data, our diversity, a number of other things as well. So, community response to the anti-crime initiative. I'm going to turn it over to our PIO Megan Black.
So as you know, we're very aggressive in informing and educating the public about our crime fighting activities with the dashboard. We are completely transparent as to what's happening. We want people to know and engage with this data. We've used social media. We've leveraged traditional media. You've probably seen, I think, every single television station, radio stations, all talked about this crime initiative and how this anti-crime initiative and what we're doing about it. So we feel it's very important to be able to reach the public, our community, to let them know that we understand their fear. We understand that car prowls are happening, and when it happens to you, it impacts you, and we we get that. So our task forces and our emphasis are very important, and it's important that the public knows that. So we've leveraged traditional and social media to get that message out. Our patrol officers have also received tremendous feedback from the businesses and the community members who've noticed officers just concentrating on an area that we call our hotspots, because we use the data dashboard. We identify where all the crimes are happening, and then we send our officers in there just to increase patrols. And they see it, and they recognize it. And these are just a few of the literally dozens and dozens and dozens of comments that we have received from our community based on the efforts from this anti-crime initiative and the response so far. And it's just in its infancy. And that's the beautiful thing about this is that we're not done yet. We're just going to keep going, and we're going to make sure that people not only are safe, but they feel safe, that perception of safety here in Bellevue.
Chief.
Thank you. A.C. Harper? Yeah, the only thing I'd add is with our anti-crime initiative, you probably know something. That's nothing necessarily new in law enforcement. We're trying to incorporate best practices, you know, using data, focusing target, focusing on areas where the data shows the most crime is. Really, what we've done in more recent months is we've really empowered our sector captains to really focus on their areas and use whatever tools and resources are available to them to make an impact. And that includes overtime, you know, hiring officers to hit certain areas at certain times and be around. And that's where we're starting to see some of the positive effects of of the anti-crime initiative.
And so I will end with this. Certainly, we're going to be back August 1st to give an update on the OIR report. And I'll just say that, and I think we're all aware, this uptick in crime is certainly happening in in our entire region, quite frankly. And I would say some cities are are challenged more than others, a lot more than others, because it's beyond just property crime for for some cities. So I think we're we are focused and are using our data the right way. And I'd like to commend the men and women of the Bellevue Police Department because they're dedicated to this effort, and this will continue throughout the year. So thank you for having us.
Thank you so much. That was a great presentation. We appreciate it.
That's my manager's.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Miyake. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have two public hearings tonight. Mr. Miyake, would you like to introduce these?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. The first of the two public hearings this evening is on a land use code amendment in response to House Bill seventeen sixty-nine, which sunsetted the East Bellevue Community Council and other community councils in Washington. And just by way background, this matter was last in front of council on June twenty-first, where council directed staff to schedule tonight's public hearing and to prepare an ordinance amending the city's land use code for adoption. So joining us this evening are Nick Whipple, our planning manager, and Caleb Miller, senior planner, both from the Development Services. With that, I'll turn it over to Nick.
So Nick, sorry, I'm just going to say we're going to have your staff report, and then we'll open the public hearing. If there's any comments, we'll hear from that. And then we'll close that, and then we'll have council comment and questions. So go ahead.
Great. Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Robinson, members of the council. Thank you for having us here this evening to present the East Bellevue Community Council Sunset Luca or Land Use Code Amendment. This item, as as the mayor mentioned, is a public hearing in action on an ordinance to amend the land use code and remove all references to the East Bellevue Community Council. So for action tonight, we are seeking council to hold the public hearing on ordinance six six seven zero, and following the public hearing, adopt ordinance six six seven zero. So our agenda will provide a background of this Luca and the objectives. We'll go into the details of the Luca components. We'll also describe the required process for this land use code amendment, and then recap the direction that we are seeking from council. So the former East Bellevue Community Council jurisdictional boundary is shown on the right in this slide here. The area is generally bounded by Northeast Eighth to the north, one hundred and fifty-sixth Avenue, Southeast to the east. And then the southern extent of the boundary is to the south edge of Robins Wood Park. The western edge heads through Kelsey Creek and then up through the Glendale Golf Course. So the East Bellevue Community Council was established in nineteen sixty-nine as a condition of annexation into the city of Bellevue. It was one of the two remaining community councils in the state of Washington with the other former community council in Kirkland. The East Bellevue Community Council is made up of or was made up of five residents of the East Bellevue area. It was empowered by the community municipal, excuse me, the Community Municipal Corporation Statute or Chapter thirty-five fourteen of the RCW. And the East Bellevue Community Council had approval and disapproval authority over certain land use actions within that area. So in this past legislative session, House Bill seventeen sixty-nine was passed into law, and it amended the Community Municipal Corporation Statute to Sunset Community Councils in the state. This sunset occurred on July ninth. Given the East Bellevue Community Council's ability to approve or disapprove ordinances over the past five or so decades, there are inconsistencies between what the land use code requirements are that apply citywide compared to what applied at the time of the EBCC's existence. So with the recent termination of the East Bellevue Community Council, this Luca is intended to update the land use code to extend citywide our regulations into the former East Bellevue Community Council area and put in place equitable, consistent, and predictable set of provisions for Bellevue. So with that, I'll have Caleb Miller walk us through the Luca components.
Great. Thank you, Nick, and good evening, Mayor and council members. So the different components of the Luca can be combined into procedural or housekeeping amendments and more substantive amendments. The procedural ones being ones that do not have any changes to the different land uses that are allowed in the EBCC. These also remove the EBCC from specific permitting procedures that they were a part of. The substantive changes are these would revise what is allowed in the EBCC and the various processes and requirements that apply to them. These are also changes to some dimensional and design standards that were either specific to or not applicable in the EBCC. And then finally, there were a few EBCC-specific chapters and provisions that are being removed with this Luca. So first for the procedural and housekeeping ones. The first one is a LI district height bonus. This was availability of an administrative conditional use permit to increase the height for certain uses in the LI district. This does not have an effect, however, because there are no LI districts in the EBCC. Additionally, the homeless services uses chapter is currently not applicable within the EBCC jurisdictional area. However, these uses are permitted or were permitted within that area as transient lodging. So they were allowed, but this Luca would just change the process through which they would be cited in the former EBCC area. And finally, as I noted, there are a few different procedures that have the EBCC baked into them. So this Luca would remove those. These are conditional use permits, preliminary plaits, final plaits, planned unit developments, and home occupation permits. Moving on to the more substantive amendments, the first is regarding the R seven point five land use district. This was not recognized within the EBCC jurisdictional area. So this Luca would revise this to be recognized in that area. However, there is no immediate effect here. This would just open up the availability of a rezone for certain parcels to be zoned to R seven point five, particularly those where there is an applicable comp plan designation that would allow it. The next are specific land use table provisions within the EBCC. Again, some that are only applicable and some that are not applicable within the EBCC area. These include things like city parks, senior housing, as well as retail floor area limitations in the CB zone, and then a height bonus for below-grade parking. All of these are being revised to be applicable the same way citywide. And then finally, on this list is the residential minimum parking requirements. There is a parking reduction that is available for residential uses within a certain radius of frequent transit. In the EBCC, that was limited to a quarter mile. However, the remainder of the city, that radius was a half mile. So this Luca would revise it to be a half mile citywide. And the last two substantive amendments, the first is for trailers, boats, and large vehicles, or recreational vehicles more generally. These consolidate and simplify the regulations around recreational vehicles to be applicable citywide, in particular where the RV can be parked on a on private property, as well as any screening requirements that apply. There are also some different rules that were in effect between the EBCC and the rest of the city regarding how long an RV can be used for a dwelling unit. This Luca would revise that to a maximum of thirty days with a temporary use permit. And finally, the definitions in the land use code. There were a few EBCC-specific definitions, and again, others that were not applicable within the EBCC. All of these shown on here are ones that will be made applicable within the EBCC jurisdictional area, and all definitions in the land use code would be applicable citywide after this Luca. In terms of the review process, we did have a study session with you on June twenty-first. And then, as Nick noted, the EBCC sunset date was on July ninth of this year. And here we are tonight for the public hearing and final action on this. I'll also note that all process for requirements for this Luca have been met, meaning all noticing and public hearing requirements. So a notice of application, a notice of public hearing, and CIPA requirements have all been met for this Luca process. And so with that, again, staff are seeking the council to hold the public hearing on ordinance number sixty-six seventy, and then following the hearing, adopting that ordinance. And I'll pass it back to you, Mayor.
Okay, great. Thank you. So with that, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Somewhere.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, city clerk, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Before I call this speaker, I would like to point out that there was one written comment received for this public hearing. It's included in your desk packet from Betsy Hummer. And then with that, I will call Betsy Hummer, who is our only speaker signed up this evening.
Is that double dipping?
Not yet.
Oh, but I get more than three minutes, right? For public hearing? I think they were.
It is just three minutes.
Okay. Mayor Robinson, council members, and staff. I'm Betsy Hummer, one four five four one, Southeast Twenty-Sixth Street in the Lake Hill slash East Gate neighborhoods. I was honored to be elected by voters in in East Bellevue to be to the East Bellevue Community Council for three terms. East Bellevue Community Council was sunsetted during the past state legislative session by an amendment to RCW thirty-five dot one-four that established community councils. I was honored to be elected as chair of the East Bellevue Community Council for four years. Those elections made me a member of a dedicated group of volunteer residents that chose to donate hours of my time and energy over the past eight and a half years to better understand issues, to make the best informed decision for the constituents in the East Bellevue Community Council jurisdiction. At this last public hearing that reverses EBCC decisions and definitions, I would like to recognize the volunteers who came before me and served with me. Number one on the list is Howard Wilson, who served for over twenty years. He was the first chair, and he made astounding legislative and comments. And currently, his estate is being developed. It's called Havenswood into eight of the mega houses, the out of scale homes, just so you know. His little pond will still stay there. Then we have Daniel Waltz, Thomas Kraft, Rudolph Gast, Donald Martin, Don Lemieux, and it's actually called Joseph in the in the record, however. We all knew him at St. Louis as Don Lemieux. Stephen Dennis, Mab Iris Tosher, Bill Serr, Jim Keefe, Bruce Robinson, Sal Mineo, whose bride still resides on Northeast Sixth. I got to doorbell her house. John Pringle, John Hancock, Kevin McKinney, Sharon James, David Banks, Phil Stamper, Daniel Kranzler, Bill Halgren, who worked closely with Rick Whitney at the Horton Community Council. Again, Don Lemieux went did a little double dipping. Brigitte Weichman, Neil Penrose, Jim Keefe went in for seconds. James Edder, Jim Bell, Michael Elwin, who passed away while he was in office. Richard Irwin, Ken Seal, my predecessor and fellow parishioner at St. Louis. Gerald Hughes, Bill Capron, who owns the Chevron at Main Street and one hundred and forty-eighth. Steve Kazner, Ross Gooding, who served as my vice president. Myself, Stephanie Walter, who served as my vice president. Hassan Dananjia, who served as vice vice chair when I was chair. Ron Epstein, and the shortest or the shortest duration members, Chi Ho Li, who was just elected in November.
Ms. Hummer, we have reached the end of your time.
Oh, please.
I would defer to the mayor.
Yes, you may. Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate it. As I said earlier, neighborhood associations are charged with being the first source of feedback for the people in their jurisdiction. I urge the council, boards, commissions, and staff to take the concerns of the people of Bellevue to heart, especially since they have no other power than their elected, appointed, and hired representatives. Thank you again. It was a pleasure to serve. Thank you, Ms. Hummer. I want to clarify why I extended her comments, because this is a public hearing. I don't know if anybody else has signed up to speak, but in our other public comments, we have to stay consistent with the rules. But with a public hearing like this, I think there is some leeway. Thank you for your comments. Thank you again, and thanks for all your support.
Thank you, Ms. Hummer. That is the end of our pre-registered list. But at this point, I would ask if there is anyone in the audience joining us who would like to make comment during this public hearing, please raise your hand. In addition, if there's anyone joining us online via Zoom who would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. And I do see one hand raised, and that is Heidi Dean. Ms. Dean, can you hear me?
I can.
Ms. Dean, can you hold on for one second? If I could ask the media room to turn the volume up in council chambers? Ms. Dean, can you hear me?
I can.
A little bit better. Okay, thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you, Charmaine. Good evening, Mayor and council. I know this public hearing can undo what's been done by the passage of House Bill twelve twenty, but I do want to share some thoughts I had as I rewatched the public hearing on that bill and listened to the comments from the sponsor as well as commenters. House Bill twelve twenty sponsored Representative Davina Dewar of Bothell neither lives in nor represents an area with a community council, and her bill was quite simply a political favor for city council members in Kirkland and Bellevue. for city council members in Kirkland and Bellevue who wanted the Houghton and East Bellevue community councils out of the way. There were many claims made about those two community councils being obstructionist, that they didn't want to take on growth that they were supposed to take on. It was very interesting listening to John Kepler, one of the Houghton council members, talk about how, in fact, they actually had more affordable housing, more multifamily. They had a transit-oriented development. You know, they were just, they could only do and oppose things that were in opposition to the city's own comp plan and that sort of thing. So I just, I do want to echo what Betsy had to say in that moving forward, especially in that area, the East Bellevue Community Council area, so much is targeted to go into that area that isn't going to go into the rest of the city. I don't think that they were obstructionist. I think that they were simply looking out for their folks. It wasn't a second bite of the apple. We, I, as a neighborhood leader who's had to fight for our own neighborhood, I can say that sometimes, there's many of us out there in neighborhoods that feel like we aren't heard at the city, that special interest groups, developers, staff, that they all have your ear where we don't. And the community councils were the closest thing that we had, you know, to represent our interests. So I hope going forward that you will listen to us, that you will respect us. Because I thought it was very interesting. Davina Dewar was caught on video in April of 2022 at the Yimby Town Conference in Portland laughing about local control, calling it garbage, mocking local elected officials like yourself. So while she was the sponsor taking away the local control at the local level here with East Bellevue Community Council, that's not to say that it won't happen to you too someday. And I just want you to remember that. Please stand up for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. And with that, Mayor, I do not see any additional hands.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so are there any comments or questions? I had one question. Can you, I know you know the answer to this, but I don't. Can you explain what R 7.5 land use is?
Sure. So the R 7.5 is a land use district that's recognized citywide except for in the EBCC jurisdictional area, or the former jurisdictional area. The land use district is nested underneath the single-family high comp plan designation. And so while there are properties that are zoned R 5, which is appropriately tied to that single-family high designation, there are not any land use districts that are zoned R 7.5, which is another designation, or, excuse me, land use district that's available under that existing single-family high designation that's within the community council's jurisdictional area.
So what does it allow? What's difference between 7.5 and 5?
A greater density. So the lot size requirements are smaller, and then the density is higher.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Five units per acre is R 5, and 7.5 units an acre is R 7.5, right?
That's a much cleaner explanation.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robertson.
R 1 is one unit per acre.
All right, thank you. Okay, any other comments or questions? Did you, Councilmember Robertson?
So I'll make a comment, and then I'll make the motion.
Councilmember Lee's going to make the motion.
Oh, Councilmember Lee wants to make the motion. That's fine, okay. So I really think that, and I really appreciate what the commenter said. I do think that the city council is accountable to the people and to the neighborhoods. And we, I've always felt that I was, you know, we're accountable to everyone in Bellevue. And I think that we will always continue to be. But this ordinance makes us one Bellevue again. It makes us so that we have uniform rules throughout the city which are equitable, predictable, consistent, and easier to administer. So I support this ordinance, and when Councilmember Lee makes the motion, I will be voting yes. Thanks.
Thank you. And I believe you were the council liaison for some time.
I was, yeah. I was the, I think I was the second liaison to the East Bellevue Community Council.
Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, I second the, as my councilmember colleague said. You know, this was something that happened a long time ago for different reasons. And I think it's really a positive for the whole city. And it's putting us at an equitable level, not a, some people get two bites of the apple, some people only get one. Or, and the other is, actually, everybody is, she said, we're all working together. And this council will work with this community, as it does with others, equitably. And actually, I think this will lead us to a better Bellevue and a better community in this level. And we will be clearly working towards that goal. So this should be something that's, the era is over. We're moving forward, we're moving upward, and we work together. So I will be voting for it also. Thank you.
Councilmember Zott.
I just want to say, I appreciate Betsy for actually showing up and reading the list of the people that had previously served. It's, we want to express appreciation and recognition for the many years of service. So I just wanted to say that.
Okay. Councilmember Lee, would you like to make the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, I'd like to make a comment as well, but I know the mayor wants to be sure that we finish things up nice and tidy. So I would like to make a motion, and then hopefully there's still opportunity to make some comments.
Why don't you just make your comment now, and then we'll...
Thank you, Madam Mayor, since everybody has already made comments. I would support this motion because it is timely. We, in the time when the community council was formed, it's for very specific reasons. Because Bellevue are made up with neighborhoods, very distinct neighborhoods. And they each have different characteristics. And the communities represent different people with different needs and characteristics. So I think it has evolved with the purpose, basically, of listening to the public, the neighborhoods, and having inputs. It's really connecting, communicating with inputs that we represent the neighborhoods, the city, that we can deliberate and have converse and make decisions. But as time has come through, changed over these years, I think we've seen that the city council has been doing a very good job. You know, the city has been well represented. And we have been able to have means of listening and talking, communicating with neighborhoods. And there are times, maybe, we have find some challenges, but this is just part of course. And so I think now we have more, as you can see, the council members are very, very eager, always wanting to reach out. We have a wonderful neighborhood program. We have neighborhood outreach, and we have technology that enables us to communicate more efficiently and much better. Our, you know, action has really been very exemplary of representing the community. And I hope that, you know, we will maintain this process so that we don't deteriorate what the public, the citizen, may be asking. And of course, I wish that, you know, we went through the process a number of years ago, where two community councils, one was voted out by its own neighborhoods. And this one, obviously, it'd be great if the neighbors felt it's outlast its purpose, and we can be well represented the way it is, then it will go away. But in this case, it has not happened. But the state law has required this will be sunsetted as of July 9th, 2022. So it's happening, and I believe that the staff has done a great job, you know, indicating what are the substantive things that need to be done. And the non-substantive ones, of course, I think it makes sense, they go away. But even the substantive ones, we recognize it, we see the differences, and we will be listening to you. Hopefully, we can continue this process. So on the basis of that, I would like to move to adopt ordinance 6670, amending the city of Bellevue land use code responding to the state, termination of the East Bellevue Community Council, which terminated as a matter of law on July 9th, 2022.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Thank you.
Could I make one last statement?
No, no, you had your chance. I want to move on. Thank you. So we have another public hearing. Mr. Miyake, would you like to introduce this one?
Sure, Mayor, thank you. The second public hearing is related to a relinquishment of a water easement. And by way of background, the council declared this easement as surplus in early June and directed staff to hold the public hearing this evening. So joining us this evening for a brief staff report are Ira Daniel, Assistant Director, and Lauren Matlick, Real Property Manager, both from the Finance and Management, Finance and Asset Management Department.
Thank you, Mr. Miyake, and good evening, Mayor and council members. Before jumping into our staff report, I just wanted to briefly introduce Lauren Matlick. He's our new Real Property Manager, and we'll be transitioning these presentations over to him going forward. So you'll be seeing a lot more of Lauren. Tonight's staff report is on a request to release a water easement located at 1525 132nd Avenue Northeast. Tonight's public hearing is an opportunity for the public to weigh in on the release. This property is being redeveloped as a multi-use building, and the developer has requested the release of this easement during their permitting process. The existing utility facilities within the easement, shown here in pink, will be removed by the developer, so the easement will no longer be needed. New water service will be provided from facilities within the public road right-of-way, so no new utility easements will be required for the project. That's it for our staff report. Following the public hearing, staff request council action on the proposed resolution authorizing the release of the easement. And we will be available to answer any questions following the public hearing.
Okay, great. Thank you. So we'll go ahead, and is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City Clerk, is there anybody signed up to comment?
No, Mayor, we do not have any pre-registered speakers this evening. So at this point, I would ask if there's anyone joining us in council chambers or anyone via Zoom that would like to make comment, please raise your hand. And there are no hands in Zoom or in council chambers.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any council comments or questions? Not seeing any. Councilmember Stokes, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution 10123, authorizing the execution of documents necessary to release an existing water easement located at 1525 132 Second Avenue Northeast, which has been directed, declared surplus to the city needs and is no longer required for providing continued public utility service.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, we are going to take a break. We will resume at 7:15. Here, we have three, excuse me, we have three study session items tonight. Mr. Miyake, would you like to introduce the first one?
Sure, Mayor and council members. The first study session topic is the potential November 2022 Parks and Community Services ballot measure. Just by way of background, raising additional revenues to address the city's growing parks and community service needs is a current council priority. And as such, the council has discussed this matter a number of times, most recently at last week's council meeting, where the council directed staff to draft ordinance and ballot links for feedback at tonight's meeting. So tonight's staff are seeking council direction on, one, confirm or provide changes to the draft ordinance, and, two, direct staff to place the draft ordinance on the agenda for council action on July 25th. So joining us this evening are Michael Shiasaki, Director of the Parks and Community Services Department, Tony Call, Director of the Finance and Asset Management Department. And joining them is our outside counsel, Stacy Crossell Lewis with the Pacifica Group. With that, I'm going to go ahead and turn over to you, Michael.
Great, thank you so much, City Manager Miyake. Good evening, Mayor Robinson and members of the city council. I'm Michael Shiasaki, and I'm so happy to be back to talk more about the park's long-term funding strategy. So let's see. So why don't we move on to the next slide? So we are, tonight we're asking for, whoops, thank you. We are asking for, as the C manager just mentioned, confirmation or changes to the draft ordinance and direction to place the draft ordinance for the parks levy on the agenda for council action next week under other ordinances. So first, I will just quickly provide a little background and timeline on how we got to tonight. We will review the approved parks levy package, and then Director Call will walk you through the draft ordinance and the ballot language, and then we will discuss next steps. As just mentioned, so we are responding to your council priority to advance a parks funding strategy, including consideration of new funding, sources for operations, maintenance, and capital. So this discussion really began back in March at your council budget workshop. And through a series of council study sessions, we have discussed a comprehensive list of potential funding strategies. We've reviewed the Parks and Open Space System Plan and the significant public engagement that we heard much from the public on overall community needs and gaps in our system. And then we developed and proposed park project categories for funding. Then, on July 11th, at the council study session, we, you approved the $85 million package of capital improvements and the mechanism, which is a nine-year levy, regular levy lid lift, and the rate. And that brings us to today's study session. And then next week, we will be seeking your council action on the draft ordinance and the ballot language. So this is the approved Parks Ballot Measure Package, and I will quickly walk you through what's in the package. It's what you approved at the last meeting. So in the left-hand category are the project categories. The middle column shows the estimated capital for each one of those categories. And then the right-hand column shows estimated maintenance and operation costs on an annual basis. So the first project category is one that I think you heard a little bit about earlier this evening. And in our park system, certainly one of the areas of greatest use and something we've heard should be a continued priority as we move forward. And that is additional open space, greenways, wildlife corridors, and trails. Next on the list would be improvements to community parks, and then additional neighborhood parks in the city. The next category is seed money for recreation and community facilities. And this would include things like an aquatic center and a cross-cultural center. Next on the list, waterfront development and restoration. And then followed by really jump-starting an effort to get park systems underway in Belred and additional parkland in Wilberton. Next on the list, emerging sports, and this includes things like what you heard about tonight, cricket and pickleball and off-leash areas in the city. And then the last line item is additional maintenance and operations funding for existing facilities in the system. So that's a quick overview of what is in the package. And next slide, please. I will turn this over to you, Tony Call, to take us through the draft ordinance and ballot language.
Thank you, Director Shiasaki, Mayor, and council members. As always, it's a pleasure to be in front of you again this evening. I have a couple of bullets of some of the key provisions that we wanted to highlight for you this evening. And the next slide, we'll actually look at the ballot language itself. So the first in Section 1 of the ordinance talks about purpose. And it's to pay or finance cost to acquire, improve, and develop open space, neighborhood, community, and recreation facility in parks, and the cost to pay for maintenance and operation of those same areas. Last week, there was quite a good discussion regarding flexibility and what the ordinance would have in it. You gave feedback to bring that back to you. So there's two areas in Section 1 that I would bring to your attention. The first is the city council authorizes to determine the scope, timing, order, and manner of funding the projects. And where you're most often going to see that is in your biannual budget deliberations and in your every other year mid-biennium. So when you're adopting the budget, the capital improvement plan would have levy projects in it, as well as the operating budget would have the operating costs for maintenance in that program as well. And the second area, flexibility... And the second area, flexibilities, is the council may alter, make substitutions to, and amend the description, allocate levy proceeds as long as it is within the interest, the best interest of the city and consistent with the purposes provided. So again, back to those parks areas we talked about a minute ago. The third area that I wanted to bring to your attention is the state law does provide an exemption to low-income senior citizens, disabled veterans, and other people with disabilities. That program is administered through the King County Assessors Office, and they use the guidelines and the state law as their basis for administering those programs. I was out on the King County site this morning, and for a low-income senior, in order to qualify for either an exemption or deferral of your taxes, the maximum income is $58,423. And for the viewing public, if you are interested in such a program, I encourage you, go out to kingcounty.gov, put Assessor into the search engine, it'll pop right up. You'll see a big green box that allows you to apply for an exemption or a deferral of your property taxes. So again, for low-income seniors, disabled veterans, and other people of disabilities. And the last provision I would bring to your attention is the calling of the election. The ordinance directs the submission of the propositions to voters at the November 8, 2022, election and provides for a ballot title. So on to the ballot title. The ballot title before you has been drafted by the City Attorney's Office and meets statutory requirements. It allows for a nine-year regular levy of approximately 15 cents per 1,000 of AV to pay and finance costs of acquiring, improving, and developing open space and parks facilities, and an additional .05 per 1,000 of AV to pay for the costs and maintenance of those same facilities. So as a point of reference, for a million-dollar property owner, what that equates to is about $200 a year or a little less than $17 a month. As I would bring to your attention, the City Council can only adjust the tax base for the 10% of overall taxes that a property owner pays. So in Bellevue, your average property owner, 90% of the taxes, property taxes they pay go to King County, State of Washington for Education, Bellevue School District, EMS, flood control, sound transit, and there's a plethora of other items in that, in that list of taxing entities. The city of Bellevue accounts for 10% of a property owner's tax bill here at the city, and this would be impacting that 10%. And with that, Director Shiasaki, I will let you finish up with next steps.
Thank you very much. So the next steps are to adopt an ordinance explaining the, the measure and the ballot language as it will appear on the November ballot. And if the council approves the ordinance, the city clerk will follow with additional legislation to appoint pro and con committees to prepare statements for the local voter's pamphlet for council action at your next meeting on July 25. And once again, our requested direction is confirmation or changes to the draft ordinance and direction to place the ordinance for the levy on the agenda for council action at your next meeting under other ordinances.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stokes, do you want to start us off?
Oh, yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm very excited about this. I think we have had robust conversations, both at the Parks Board, both within the community and at the council, and had a, you know, the Parks Board, I think, has done over the last couple of years an amazing job of kind of putting this together, listening to the community, and of course, we've heard from various organizations, as we had tonight, coming and talking with us. It's been a really broad look at what we need in recreation, in people wanting to get outdoors, all these different things, and also sports, a wide range of things that are encompassed in this, and it really builds on the great system we have with, you know, had before and are completing this section for the parks over the last, since 2008. And it's just been an amazing difference in helping Bellevue go forward. So I'm very excited about this. I think the public's ready for this. The public is very interested. I think we made a very rational decision on this. Obviously, you always want to have, you know, more to do more things, but I think this is something that, one, is rational in terms of any, you know, for the public to be involved in it and for them to make the investments, and it will move us in small, medium-sized, and larger things down the line so that we continue to be a city and a park. And I'm really ready to go with this, excited about it, and again, appreciate all the work that councilmembers, staff, and the boards and commissions, it's not just Parks Board, but others involved have, you know, a stake in this as well. So I'm ready to go for it. So I'm really excited.
Thank you. Councilmember Robertson.
Sure. No, I likewise. I appreciate you coming back. I'm comfortable with the explanation on flexibility. I think this, this is really important. It's one, parks are one of the things that make Bellevue livable and make us a place where people want to work so they can get outside on their lunch or visit, or visit. A lot of people come and visit our parks, so from outside of Bellevue, and, and we're not creating more unimproved land. So acquiring the open space while we can in order to serve the people that we know are coming to work and live in Bellevue, I think is really important, and the time is now. One ask I have, not to change the ordinance, but I'm wondering if on Slide 6, where you talk about the initiative package, a lot of these categories have the EG in parentheses. I would love to see, next to emerging sports, EG cricket, pickleball, because that way it's very clear that that's what we mean. I know that that will not be on the ballot, but it, a lot of people will look at these. And I remember when I was new on the council, looking back at the last park levy, looking at the council materials to figure out what, what had been promised to the voters as we made decisions on the CIP to implement that. So I don't know if we can add that. That's just an ask. It's not really a motion or anything. Can we do that?
It's included as Exhibit A, so I...
Does it have to be amended?
Let me just look at where it is. Is it, is it Exhibit A?
To the ordinance.
To the ordinance, so yes, we would need to amend it, but I don't know that there's, there's a problem with that.
Okay. Well, I would make a motion to just add a parentheses, EG cricket, comma, pickleball, next to emerging sports. I think that will help people understand. We have a lot of people wanting to do cricket. We've been talking about doing cricket. I think that will help let people know what we are thinking, because I know we're all thinking that when we look at emerging sports.
We'll just continue with discussion, and I'll ask
That's fine.
councilmembers to weigh in on that idea.
Okay, and then, yeah, and then I'll make a motion to amend. I didn't realize it was attached to the ordinance. I thought it was just an internal staff fix. But anyway, I strongly support this and will be voting in favor of moving this on for action next week. Thanks.
Councilmember Zahn.
Yes, thank you. I support this as well. I think that it's, it's an important aspect of a growing city that we support parks and open space that our community's been asking for and moving faster with that work. I do support Councilmember Robertson's request to add those because we do have other line items that have the, for example, areas, so including that will be important. I did have one question, and maybe I wasn't as clear on the actual language that would be in the voter's pamphlet. So in the PowerPoint presentation, you, it has to a maximum rate of 1.19 per 1,000, but in our packet, it talks about 1.1944 per 1,000. So is this an updated version that we're seeing on the PowerPoint different than in our packet? Because, and, and the main reason I'm asking is because that is the maximum we're asking for. And then I read that the .15 is approximate, so if I take the 1.19, I'm just in my head trying to understand the math, then really what we're saying is the, the maintenance and operation portion is the .05, so the balance is whatever the .14, and so on and so forth. Is that correct? Because I think that math might be important to understand.
Councilmember Zahn, that's a very good question. I'm going to defer part of the question to Stacy in a minute, but I'm going to answer your math question first, and then I'll let Stacy speak to the word approximately and whether the rate has to be 1.944 or 1.19. So I'll leave that to Stacy in a second. The 1.9 you see here is the maximum that the council could choose if you chose to include 100% of your bank capacity in your December discussion. Since you have none, you have not had any of those discussions, the number that is here is the maximum the city could possibly levy. If you chose to not do that at all, the total maximum would be something close to $1.05 or something along those lines. But in order to preserve your discussion for the further budget discussions later in the year, it is common practice to have the total maximum that would be allowed under the city by your authority, if you so chose to make it at this point, and then when you come to December, you can choose whatever you would like to do. Kat, can you speak to the other two questions that she asked, please?
Of course. Good evening, City Councilmembers. The levy lid lift statute requires the ballot proposition to include the maximum rate per 1,000 and to include that maximum rate per 1,000 of the first year of collection. So here we are in 2022, trying to come up with a maximum rate per 1,000 for collection in 2023, that taking into account things like the city's bank capacity, the 1% that you could by state law include, new construction. So the ballot proposition, having to include that maximum rate per 1,000, does present some challenges, but that's simply what the statute requires. The additional information that it's included, specifically the estimate of 15 cents per 1,000 for the capital piece and 5 cents per 1,000 for the operating and maintenance piece, is additional information for the voters. It's really informing your, your voters of what the city intends to do with this additional authority, but the statute actually requires the maximum rate per 1,000. So the city could, for example, as long as you're within the maximum rate per 1,000, decide to levy only 14 cents for, for capital, for example. But you're communicating to the voters what you intend to do on, on that language.
So I'm just going to say, I misread this completely. I thought it was 0.19. So I needed to read that more carefully. But, you know, when we see a bunch of these in here, it, just for the regular voters that don't see a lot of these, it might be a little confusing and trying to understand what the word approximately is intended to mean. I don't know if in the other descriptions, there's a little bit more stuff there. So thank you for the explanation. It's, it's helpful to understand, especially for those that are new into the space. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. Before I comment, I would like to follow up with Councilmember Zahn's question. I think this is very confusing. It's difficult for people to understand, including, as you see, some of us. You actually talk about two things. When is, what is the levy rate for the levy specifically, which is .15 plus .05? Okay, but then when you include this maximum rate of $1.19 bank capacity, that's the rate that we are paying now on our property tax rate, right? Or no? So, so how does that relate to the bank capacity? You know, are we going to be able to, even though we are asking for .15 and .05, we can actually charge up to 1.19? That, that's question mark. So I'm asking a bunch of questions, which because it's causing a lot of different ideas and confusion. The first question, and now, yeah, go ahead, please.
So the current levy rate that exists in the city Bellevue right now is about, I'm rounding in my head, so I can't give you an exact number, but it's something around 85 cents.
Yes.
Give or take. I'm close, I'm close to 85 cents.
Yes.
I'm, I'm close there. By the time you add in the 20 cents for the parks levy, 85 and 20 equals $1.05.
Yeah.
About, give or take, and I'm rounding in my head, so please forgive me if I'm about to come out of rounding. It's not going to work out quite so well. To that, we would add, if, if the council so chose, you could take any of your bank capacity in December. That's a choice the council gets to make in December, not today, but in December, when you adopt your property tax, final property tax legislation. So you add that in, that allows, gets you up to your maximum available rate that you could adopt in December. What we're asking for today is for 15 cents to go to the parks levy for capital and 5 cents for maintenance and operations. It preserves your rights in December for whatever you may choose to do in December. But today, we are purely asking for that. This legislation is statutorily required for us to put the maximum rate in, and if we chose a number that didn't include all that your authorities would do, and you chose that authority, I would have limited your abilities in December. So this provides you ultimate flexibility to do as you choose in December when you adopt the budget. But to be clear, what we're asking for is a 15-cent levy for capital and a 5-cent levy for maintenance and operations. And the challenge with the language is truly how it statutorily is required to be written. Stacy, is there anything you want to add to that?
That was a very clear explanation.
Okay, thank you.
Following question, follow-up. So that additional bank capacity, we can add to whatever we want to. It doesn't just apply to this levy. It could be anything we want. So I think you're describing it the way you did seems to be you're actually applying to the parks levy. No?
No.
That's, that's why it's unclear again. So you can actually, you know, ask up to, and we're not, we're going to just limit to .15 and .05.
Correct.
But the way you describe it is like, hey, we can actually add more to it until we get to 1.19 or 1.2. That's confusing.
Yes.
So I don't know, I don't know how you handle this, because, because, you know, you have to describe, understand. So that's a dilemma, but it just seemed to be confusing when we're asking. I don't know if the public would.
I, we can do some research into that.
Maybe a footnote somewhere that we can explain this. That might be the way to handle. So we know that your, your parks levy request is going to be .15 and .05, even though there's, and you have to show this absolutely based on law. So maybe that's what you need to say in your levy. Okay, but it doesn't mean that that's going to be available for the parks levy. If you, yeah.
I, I hear.
We intended to have it.
I hear, I hear the comment. It makes tremendous sense. It's a confusing part of property tax law that exists. And I do know that there will be a pro and a con campaign and provide options to provide additional clarity in the voter's pamphlet. I would have to rely on Stacy to talk about whether or not there's any options to adjust, but I believe it's statutorily required.
Yes, yes. Okay, thank you. You want to continue, or should I proceed?
I, I will confirm that the maximum rate, the overall maximum rate is what the statute requires, and it presents exactly this, this communication issue of levying a specific amount for the parks levy and having to communicate the overall maximum levy rate. We did include some recitals in the ordinance to try to walk through the, you know, the existing rate, the rate with taking into account bank capacity, the 20 cents increase to get to the maximum rate, and could add more detail if that would be helpful in those, those building block recital at the beginning of the ordinance.
I wonder, I thought that might complicate it. I don't know whether it will or not. You know, with the bank capacity, we have that much more we can use, okay, because we only, .8. So if we have this levy, okay, that means we're losing some of the bank capacity. If we don't have the levy, we have more room for other uses. We can pass that actually.
This is a, this is a question you're asking.
It's a question.
And I'm going to let Tony answer.
It's a question, right? You know what I'm saying?
I, I hear you. This, a levy does not use any of your bank capacity. All this does is preserve your right to use it if you so chose to in, when you make your final property tax assessment for 2023, which you will not make that decision until, I'm going to go with November. But all it does is preserve your rights to have true, complete flexibility. Staff has made no decisions for you because you've given no direction. Is, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thanks. That's another confusion. See, we could understand. It's okay. Just get back to the, the presentation levy itself. I appreciate that. Very good. You, you guys did a wonderful job, addressed all the needs, and Bellevue is a city and a park. You know, we always need to have more, obviously, but we have to be diligent, right, separately. And I think we've looked at all the things that you mentioned, such as on your list, you know, parks, I don't have to go through the whole list. And the, the point I was going to make is retaining, regarding, I think, Councilmember Robertson's suggestion, to be more specific. Some, sometimes I feel that be more specific. Sometimes I feel that if you want to be specific, you sometimes can, can lose the inclusiveness and lose the flexibility, lose the, you know, because people are gonna say, well, there may be others as we go by that you figure could be, but I don't know what's the list. Haven't looked at the whole list, whether it's including everything or not. But so I think by giving example of one or two, I think that's probably all right. But I think we need to say such as, maybe not for those, people can perceive as, wow, I miss my thing, right? I, I like to play something else, whatever, which I can erase before. But so I, I think that's by my only concern. So I'm not sure whether this necessarily need to be clear. But I like the idea of flexibility. I like the idea of, because time change, and we're gonna hear more from the people. And when you provide the levy, you know, I would imagine we listen to the, we hear from the public. They all want to have more input to us. So when you do your obvious, this levy's gotta be informed, you know, to the public. We, we may hear things that we, we agree it's important to add to. So I like that very much. So thank you for including that. Other than that, I support it. Thank you.
Councilmember Barxdale.
All right, thank you. I support the ordinance. I did have one recommendation, but before I get to that, I do support Councilmember Robertson's amendment when it comes up. Can you go back to the ordinance slide, please? Thank you. I appreciate the comments. The comment I had in mind prior to that is if we could just use plain language. So for example, instead of the 15 cents divided by 1,000, right, because it's not the divided by, it's per 1,000, I think it would make it easier if we could just use the terms there so people aren't confused. And I, I don't know if it's possible, but one thing that might clear up the levy amount versus the total amount or maximum rate is to make, is to have the maximum rate as a separate sentence that basically summarize, like, says that the maximum rate for collection in 2023 is blah, 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 right? So you still have the same language, but it just breaks, breaks up the sentence a little bit so people can make sense of it.
Thank you, Councilman Barxdale. I'd have to defer on ballot language to Stacy or Kathy.
So this is, the ballot title is something ultimately that is to be drafted by the city attorney. There are legal limits and there are word limits. So we have valiantly tried to stay within the legal limits and the, and the word limits here, which is why I think you're seeing the language the, the way that it is. So, you know, we can certainly take back and consider your comments. I'm not sure if we can accommodate them within the bounds of the legal restrictions that we have to deal with.
I, I guess I would just say, I think, I think it's important that people understand what they're voting for. And so I would just say, maybe a little bit of rewording to fit a few extra three-character words in, for example. I would, I would just say, I think I would prioritize people understanding what they're voting for.
We certainly share that goal because this whole thing is supposed to be understandable by the voters. So whether we can accommodate it in the title, whether there's some other way we can accommodate it through explanatory statements and the voter pamphlet, I, we'd certainly share, you know, the goal of making sure the voters actually understand what they're voting on.
Thank you.
Yeah, I see the challenge. They count how many words. We could use, for nine years, as a number nine. Okay. So I appreciate the comments. I appreciate your recommendation to do the examples, those two examples. And I will just say, and I'm fine with how, you know, with moving forward with this, I would like to make it really easy for people who qualify to apply for that exemption and the deferral. And the very people who we're trying to target are probably the least technical savvy. And so maybe we could employ the Bellevue Network on Aging to help us get the message out to the seniors in our community so that they, it's easy for them to apply for an exemption if they qualify. And the people, and people with disabilities as well, correct?
Yes, and disabled veterans.
And, and disabled veterans. So if we could reach all those groups, that would, that would be great.
That's a very good idea. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So let me see. Councilmember Robertson, you're going to make the motion tonight. Do you want to go ahead and-
Well, it seemed like I heard pretty widespread support for the adding the EG, which by the way, someone was asking about that. It stands for exempli gradia, which means for example. So the EG means for example. So it's not, it's meant to be expansive, not, not restrictive.
So start with that motion?
Well, I need to put the, I can either put the ordinance on the table and then make a motion to amend it, or I could put the ordinance on the table as amended.
Let's, let's amend the ordinance.
Okay, so I'll make a motion. I move to direct staff to prepare the ordinance as drafted for consideration and final action on July 25th, 2022.
Second.
Okay. And then I make a motion to amend the, the ordinance for the attachment to include next to the words emerging sports parentheses, EG cricket, comma, pickleball, close parentheses.
Second.
Okay, let's have a vote on that amendment. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the amended motion is on the table. Any comments or questions on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that passes. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Next week, next week.
Yep, we'll see it again on July 25th. Okay, we have two other study session items. Mr. Miyaki.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. The next study session topic is an informational overview of the Cascade Water Alliance's draft 2023 to 2024 budget and rate increases. Tonight, the Cascade Water Alliance staff will provide the, an informational overview, and council will have an opportunity to ask questions of the Cascade staff, as well as provide input to Councilmember Barxdale, who represents Bellevue on the Cascade Board, who will be taking a vote on the budget sometime, I believe, in September. Okay, so. So joining this evening is Lucy Liu, Deputy Utilities Department Director in front of us. She will be joined by Cascade Water Alliance staff Ray Hoffman, Chief Executive Officer, and Ed Seaburn, Chief Economist. I believe they are joining us virtually this evening. Okay, Lucy, you want to just do a quick overview and keep us off?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Miyaki. Good evening, Mayor Robinson and councilmembers. Bellevue has enjoyed our partnership with Cascade since 1999 to provide safe and reliable drinking water to the city's residents and businesses. Cascade is an important regional partner for Bellevue. Bellevue purchases over half of Cascade's water supply, and the costs that we pay to Cascade are the Bellevue Water Utilities' largest bill. The Cascade Board, as Mr. Miyaki mentioned, is scheduled to adopt the proposed 2324 budget and rate increases in September. And with that, I'm very pleased to introduce Ray Hoffman, Cascade CEO, and Ed Seaburn, Cascade's Chief Economist.
Great. Thank you, Lucy, for the introduction.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Ray Hoffman, CEO of Cascade Water Alliance. Thank you for inviting us tonight to share Cascade's budget and rates update for the years of 2023 and 2024. I'd like to start by thanking Councilmember Barxdale, Councilmember Stokes, and your utilities staff for their hard work and time spent on refining our budget and rates proposal. Cascade's Finance Committee and Board of Directors have been working on budget and rates since early spring, and the feedback and input that we have received from Bellevue has been invaluable in the development of a solid budget and rates proposal, one that provides both cost-effective wholesale water supply services and accountability to your customers when they pay their utility bill. Next slide, please. I want to spend just a minute on background as a refresher for the council and for members of the public. Cascade Water Alliance is a municipal corporation that provides drinking water to seven members, shown here on the map. And as mentioned by Lucy, Bellevue is our largest member, accounting for somewhere between 52% and 53% of annual water consumption. Cascade serves over 380,000 people and 20,000 businesses, and it's governed by a Board of Directors of Member Agencies elected officials. We purchase water from Seattle. It is a contracted supply that begins to decline in 2039, with the contract ending in 2063. Our mission is to secure long-term water supply. The Lake Taps reservoir was acquired as the future source of Cascade's supplies. Next slide, please. Cascade's budget and rates implement our five-year strategic plan that was adopted by the board and does so while maintaining financial stability. This slide shows the six goals laid out in our strategic plan. One point I'd like to make is that Cascade's projects and activities not only allow us to deliver safe, reliable, and clean water in a cost-effective way today, but also prepare us to develop the Lake Taps reservoir as a source of drinking water for our members in the future. And with that overview, I'd like to turn this over to Ed Seaburn, Chief Economist for Cascade.
Thank you, Ray. Next slide, please. A quick overview of kind of this big picture, and then we'll dive in a little bit. The Cascade budget for the upcoming biennium, we'll focus on 2023 here, shows about $55 million in revenues and uses. And this chart illustrates the way we collect and apply revenues. Member charges are predominantly used to pay for ongoing costs, which include that purchased water that supplies our members, with a small fraction going into our capital improvement program that's tied to a fiscal policy related to capital reinvestment. The regional capital facilities charge, which is a connection charge for new development, similar to a system development charge in many communities, and the general facilities charge in Bellevue that you recover through rate surcharges, is exclusively committed to the capital improvement program. We also have in this upcoming biennium increased emphasis on the Water Supply Development Fund, which was adopted and implemented by the board late last year. And you'll note that the totals don't exactly match because of changes in fund reserves, as, as well as inter-fund transfers and rate smoothing, which we'll get to in a later slide. Next slide, please. On the expenditure side, the proposed budget at Cascade, particularly in O and M, which is the portion supported by member charges, is predominantly fixed in nature. Cascade doesn't control the payments to Seattle, which is a fixed block contract with a specified method that determines the annual charges. We also have debt service, which is about 20% of our total revenues, and operations at Lake Taps via contract operator, which is another couple million dollars. Only about $7 million out of this $44 million operating budget are actually what you would consider controllable or variable costs. Next slide. In the 2023 and 2024 budget, broken down into functional areas in our operating program, you see administration and conservation are essentially flat over the two-year period. Operations increases, and that's a reflection of increased cost escalation that tracks through to our contract operator and the wages they, they pay, as well as materials and supplies. The debt service, you'll see a drop in 2023. This is actually caused by the bond refunding that occurred after the adoption of the 2022 budget that resulted in almost $600,000 a year of savings. But you'll also see a bit of a spike in 2024, which is essentially an anomaly of the debt repayment schedule, where the refunded and unrefunded bonds have kind of an uncomfortable fit for one year. The following years, it drops back to that $9.2 million level. Finally, the water payments to Seattle in 2023, you see a significant increase. This is in part because we have a true-up for 2021 that would be due and payable in that year of about a half million dollars. In 2024, there's a more modest increase scheduled. Next slide. Looking at the capital side, we have a number of activities and activity areas. We're just completing a significant project in what we call SCADA, or the System Control Automated Information System, and our security systems around the Lake Taps facilities. Our major expenditures coming up relate to, in the upper conveyance, to the completion of, of our diversion, at the new diversion dam on the White River, and that's scheduled for 2023. It was in the 2022 budget and has now been pushed forward because the Army Corps of Engineers controls that project and will hopefully have it scheduled during the windows that are available in 2023 for completion. Other major efforts in upcoming years then include lower conveyance, where we have control and conveyance issues related to the penstocks, and release of water from Lake Taps ultimately back to the White River. Other projects are significant but smaller of scale and more of an ongoing maintenance. You'll notice the Bellevue Issaquah Pipeline, which is a major facility from our east side, the Seattle East Side Reservoir that supplies Bellevue Issaquah and Spanish Plateau, has a couple of major provisions in upcoming years related to possible relocations due to washout and other highway work. The other notable item here is that in, in our Seattle agreement, we've, we've had three one-time payments, the last of which is due in 2024. It's $5 million. So you see a jump upwards in 2024, reflecting that payment, and then moderately constant amounts thereafter. Next slide, please. Looking at the revenue in the same way we just looked at it in expenses, one of the advantages Cascade has compared to most enterprises and utility enterprises is we have a highly fixed revenue structure that's consistent with our highly fixed cost structure. But effectively, with the adoption in September, we'll know exactly what amount of revenue we'll collect from members in 2023 and in 2024. The only variable revenues are the regional capital facilities charges, which is paid as growth occurs and is therefore dependent on the rate of growth at different times in different communities in our service area, and other revenue, which is an area that's grown somewhat recently because this reflects interest earnings, as well as some other miscellaneous revenue sources of Cascade. Next slide. Looking at this in terms of percentage increases, you see what I had noted regarding administrative and conservation costs. They're essentially unchanged over these two years. The demand share charges, which cover most of the other, almost all of the other operating costs, are going up a little more significantly, and are drivers of the 2.2%. You see the regional capital facilities charges jumps up quite a bit in 2023. This does not reflect a rate increase as much as it reflects an assumption that we are returning to normal and historical growth patterns. During the pandemic, we saw a reduction in development activity and a reduction in new connections that is now in recovery mode. So we're, we're planning for that recovery to historic levels of growth. And finally, as I mentioned, other revenues are going up somewhat with the expectation of higher interest earnings and our investment of funds in more, in higher yielding investments, which was part of the WSDF package. Next slide. As to the rates themselves, what we're looking at is a 2.2% increase year over year in member charges. That's a little under $1 million each year in the increase. This table provides a breakdown of, of the drivers of that annual change. You'll see the water payments line, which are our payments to Seattle for water under the wholesale contract, are of a scale comparable to the overall increase. But there are other factors of increases and decreases. And you see the debt service decline, for example, in, in this slide again. And finally, the last line in this table, rate smoothing, is part of our package of fiscal policies that we look at a five-year rate period and try to smooth out increases over that period that results in some years in surpluses, other years in, in shortfalls from a cash flow perspective, but completes the funding over that five-year period with reserves being managed to manage through that. It does look like a very large number in 2024. I'd simply point out that that's due to that spike in debt service, and we've already been providing for that because it's actually a large payment due in January of 2023. So the funds will be in hand, and this does not, it really indicate that we are beginning to generate large deficits in our operations and revenues. Next slide. The member payments themselves, while 2.2% is our overall increase, it does vary by member. The variation has caused most- The variation is caused most predominantly by the amount of water used. And under our structure, the amount of water used in the peak summer season. And that causes differential impacts. We're seeing more, a wider range of impacts this time than we've seen in other cycles. In part, this is because Redmond's pattern of use has changed, and they're actually seeing reduction this year, in part because we've had several members, including Bellevue, who have had higher relative shares of peak demands than they have historically. More peaking, dry summers and more long watering, but more so than our average member. And that's shifting costs towards Bellevue. And as an example, Takwila is the opposite, where they don't have as much peaking, and their flattening demand results in lower costs. I will say that these charges at this level are still somewhat preliminary. We've raised a number of questions back to members who provide us data that drives this allocation to ensure that the allocations are consistent with intent and are accurate. So there could be modifications to this going forward. My last point here is we are modifying one practice of Cascade in this cycle. We do a true-up of 2022 charges and would be covering that in 2023. Because of this volatility, we're proposing to recover its spread over two years to mitigate the annual increases and help smooth out for individual members in the same way that we smoothed out our increases for Cascade as a whole. Next slide, please. Different version of the same information in terms of Bellevue's increases. This is a breakdown of the elements of payment, which include the demand share as the primary source of revenue, administrative and conservation charges. The true-up is almost unnoticed at the top of the 2023 and 2024 year, where it's spread over those two years. But the cumulative impact is 3.36% next year and 2.33% the following year. Also shown on this graph are Bellevue's share of total Cascade demands, and you can see it increasing in terms of the demand shares that are being paid for. And that increase is part of the reason that Bellevue's increases above average for Cascade as a whole. Next slide. As we've gone through this, we've also, we continuously pay attention to our cost structure and our expenditures. We also look at revenues and revenue opportunities, and the fact the board has directed that we look for opportunities to generate revenues from Lake Taps where possible. There are a series of actions listed here that relate to how we went into and through the budget process. The debt, the bond refunding I mentioned earlier. We also have our eye on potential bond refunding in 2024, although rising interest rates may not make that as attractive. The Seattle true-up, we have mechanisms in place to mitigate that impact from rates near term by holding reserves that we then use in a year like 2023 to offset it. We have a similar policy structure and financial structure for what we term infrequent expenses, system plan, which occurs every 10 years, or sediment removal, which occurs during outages at the lake. And in each case, we accumulate reserves on an annual basis based on an expectation of expenditures. Then in a year like 2022, where we did sediment removal, that money comes out of reserves to pay for it and keeps it out of the year-to-year rates and that volatility. A really interesting one that's about to go online is that we have solar panels on the roof of our powerhouse down at Lake Taps now, which will virtually meet all of our energy needs at that location for our facilities there. And finally, we've had an opportunity to add funding to the Water Supply Development Fund based on some positive financial outcomes, like growth higher than budgeted. And with that transfer and the shared benefit strategy, that means half the money goes to that reserve for future supply, but the other half remains available for current needs and has helped hold down our rates and hold the line on our rates, which had been projected to be 2.2%. And despite recent upticks in capital cost expenditure indices and consumer price indices, we've been able to hold the 2.2% for this biennial. Next slide, please. So what this comes down to for the board in September, we'll be making recommendations on rates, which would include the 2.2% per year overall increase and the member charges that go with that, that you saw on that earlier slide. The RCFC also is projected to increase, and our recommendation is about a $250 increase in each of these two years. That's tied largely to cost escalation in the construction cost index. And finally, we are again proposing to do a two-year adoption of rates so that all our members on biennial budgets have certainty in their payments to Cascade. But what that means for Cascade is the second year is subject to true-up, and that would be dealt with in the subsequent biennial. With that, that's the summary of the financial elements, and Ray and I are ready to answer questions.
Thank you. So Councilmember Berkshire, do you want to start us off?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First, just want to say thanks to Ray and Ed and the rest of the Cascade staff for their work in putting this budget presentation together and their responsiveness and working with utility staff as well, and want to thank utility staff for that work, too. Thank you. So one thing that you noticed was that we had an increase higher than the, than expected with that three point, I think it was 3.3, 3.6%. And one of the things that is happening is city staff, our utility staff, Cascade staff, and other member city staff are working together to figure out why that number is as high as it is. And so when Ed was hinting or indicating that that number may change because of the work that's happening, that's what's happening right now to figure out what that, why the consumption is what it is. Just overall, I know we ended on the cost containment or mitigation strategies, but just want to continue to encourage Cascade to continue to look for cost containment strategies, just given the stretch that many of our community members right now are facing with inflation and just the increased cost of living right now. With that, I'll just turn it over to, back to you, Mayor, and look forward to everyone's comments.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for your representation on this. Councilmember Stokes.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have much to add. I appreciate Councilmember's comments and participation on this. And it is, you know, everybody's in a weird time, and we didn't think about looking at this way, you know, in the past. But I think the level of collaboration and cooperation has been very good. And this is a very straightforward presentation. And it is interesting, we've had higher, in some places, higher consumption, other factors in this, but overall, given the inflation in general and the unsettlement in the, you know, financial community and everything, this is pretty, pretty steady, pretty rational proposal at this point. And obviously, before we get to the final decision, we'll be working some more on this. And I know the utility staff has really been working hard on this to help to work with Cascade staff. And, you know, it involves working the other cities as well. So it's a, it's a very unique process and very unique organization. And the whole goal is to supply water and other pieces of that whole concept at reasonable rates and keep it all, work it all in line and make it work better. And so it's just, I think, this is really good work done and looking forward to the, you know, having it finalized and some of these things we're looking at and moving forward and hearing response from the utility as well. So I'm very pleased with it and think it's a very positive for us and for the whole Cascade utility system.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hi, Ray and Ed. I miss working with you guys.
Likewise.
Thank you. You know, I know that you have a tough job in the moment to regional issue, working a lot of different jurisdictions. They may have different needs, right, and different requirements and different situations. Second, you know, this is a very challenging environment with the water supply, with what you do, the purpose originally of Lake Taps is one. Now things are changing, the water price in Seattle and supply is changing. So you got to be really nimble and flexible. And so I'm really glad that with Ed and helping you guys, Ray, and your staff, that you have been able to meet, you know, and the challenges and being flexible, and hopefully continue to be even more nimble to take advantage of all these situations. One good example is that you refinance your debts, and that's a big coup. It made a big difference. And you're making good decisions. And I hope by collaborating with Bell Utility, you're working well because I think we share a lot of the same principles and a lot of the same goals and same ideas. And, you know, that doesn't change. So I appreciate what you guys are doing. So, you know, this is the way, this is what it is. You know, you have to balance your budget, have to do whatever you have to do. And then you work with our staff, and I think both parties are very collaborative, working great, you know, give and take, and we're going to take care of our constituents. The residents are the ones that are going to pay our bill. So I think we all understand that. And one thing that I really appreciate is the tool on the Lake Taps. That's a really interesting thing that we all need to learn. So I encourage councilmembers, take a tool on Lake Taps. You learn so much. If you talk about the solar panel on the, you know, on the powerhouse, you know, it's amazing, the history it has and the things that you get to see. And you got to actually see a real fish, how we take care of them. So my question, I have a question for you, however, even though, you know, I think most people probably don't know that, I just want to ask. You mentioned Seattle agreement, we know we buy water from them, right? And so their rates have been going down, which is good, we take advantage of it. And so we have room for, you know, negotiation and talk about other opportunities. You also mentioned Tacoma agreement. Could you say a couple of words about Tacoma agreement? Because most people probably don't know what we do with them and how we, you know, they serve us. How do we, you know, play together? So if you can do that, that'd be appreciated. Thank you.
Okay. We first entered into an agreement with Tacoma in the early 2000s, sometime around 2005, with the intent to buy water from them, construct a pipeline, and supplement the Seattle agreement. It turned out that that original vision became unnecessary because our demands were not increasing. And about 12 years ago, we started going a different direction. We successfully extended the contract with Seattle. In the meantime, we had supplemented the block with additional water from Seattle, so we didn't have that supply risk. And we proceeded to renegotiate the contract with Tacoma. What we have now is a contract that runs till 2042. We have the right to up to 8 million gallons a day of water and a, an ability to take that if and when we build a pipe that connects us to their system. A part of that restructuring was a payment structure that you see in our capital improvement program of annual capacity reservation payments. Those are, they began at $5 million, they escalate at about $100,000 a year. And until 2029, at which point they dropped to $1 million and then progress at that level for the remainder of the contract. What that does is it provides us an insurance policy in terms of the Tacoma water. But what it did when we renegotiated into that structure was saved us about $40 million over the payments that would have been due under the original agreement. So it remains viable, and in fact, we are in negotiations with Tacoma as well as Seattle now, exploring contract extension or new supply contracts to meet future needs. You may be aware, after 2039, our Seattle contract starts declining in capacity. And unless we supplement that with a new contract or an extension of the contract, we'll need to supplement it with our own supply.
Thank you. This is an example of what good work you guys are working on, you guys are doing. So thanks again.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Robertson.
Thanks. So you haven't locked in the new Seattle contract yet?
No, we have not. So the current contract, as Ed said, extends to 2039 and starts declining. We're roughly six months into discussion with staff at Seattle Public Utilities about the potential for a contract extension. Most of that time so far has been spent on the financial terms and trying to come to a common understanding and agreement of the financial assumptions being used by both parties. We hope to wrap up the financial assumptions within the next month or two, and then we would move to other large-ticket items for discussion with Seattle, such as...
That's okay. I just wanted to know where we were on the status. So thank you very much for that. The, you said you were going to true-up the numbers on the proposed payments. It seems to me that with the cold, wet spring and summer, very well, we could have lower usage by Bellevue this year because of the weather. I know that last summer, I had a very, very high water bill for irrigation, but this summer, it's been kind of a normal bill, like any other time of the year. So will, when will you be doing that? And will it take into account the colder, wetter spring and summer, which may have affected people's usage of water via irrigation?
Right. For us to impose a year's charges, we need a three-year history. For 2023, that history is 2019 to 2021. For 2024, we will have to include the 2022 year, which obviously hasn't been completed. Next spring, when we get the data from, we'll have all the Seattle data, and then we collect data from our members, we'll be able to analyze 2022 and determine how well we estimated the charges that'll be imposed in 2024.
All right.
You're right, with the wet, cool summer and, you know, no major hot spells in sight like we had last year, irrigation demands are down, and that will be reflected in all our members' use. But we have some members like yourselves in Sammamish that we see more influence of weather than in others like Takwila or Kirkland. So differentially, yes, you may wind up with a true-up credit next time around as a consequence.
All right. So I wanted to talk about the percentage and the costs of water for a minute. So, because I don't, I'm not sure I understand this, and I just want to check my understanding. So the 2.2% increase is the across-the-board rate increase for everybody for whatever it is, a unit of water. Is that right?
That's right. Well, it's for, it's actually not even for a unit of water. It's the increase in Cascade revenues from members year-over-year.
So it's not a rate increase, it's a projected revenue increase?
Correct.
Okay, so that makes sense. So this was very confusing because I thought it was the, I'm wondering why Bellevue's not having a 2.2% increase if that's the increase. But it's, that's the projected revenue, and based on, you know, whoever uses the most, they might, if someone uses more than their proportionate share from the past, then their percentage of that revenue increase will be more or less, right? It's kind of like ad lorum taxes.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, if one area has big increases in new construction, they might pay more, or, okay, or new AV. Okay, I understand that now. It's really confusing how it's being presented, and I would just encourage you to make sure that when you're, when you're presenting it, that it's, these are the projected revenue, not this is the projected new rates for members. Because otherwise, I'm going, why aren't, why aren't we, it's not fair if we're not paying 2.2% more if that's the increase in rate. But I understand it now. So thank you. I really appreciate the presentation.
Councilmembers on.
Yes, thank you, Lucy, Ray, and Ed. I too appreciate the information. You know, I was thinking, I was reading through about the cost containment strategies, such an important thing to do. And although I will say that the concept of holding down rates, I just want to make sure that it's about rightsizing the rate because if we don't adjust for inflation sufficiently, because I noticed, I was reading in the presentation, it said, you know, only on a few items, and the importance of maintaining bond rating by having good maintenance on our facilities. So I just want to make sure that we actually are rightsizing the rate. So yes, we appreciate the fact that you're holding down the rate. Let's just make sure that we don't cut so deeply that we are not attending to the things that are really important. I appreciated reading about the solar panels to reduce energy bills, which then contributes year after year, helpful to understand what the 2.2 means. And I would say that, you know, yes, this year, we've had a lot more rain. But I'm wondering from a holistic, if we take a step back from... this is about our, the payment for water. But to the degree that we are doing a conservation on our water usage for our community. So, you know, maybe because it's been a wet year and people are using less water, can we figure out how to keep them from, from using as minimal, optimizing their water usage as much as possible? And I believe we are already doing that. I just wonder if we can really double down on those efforts, especially if the percentage of usage in Bellevue per capita appears to be higher than other places. Then we might just think about how we can all be better uses of the precious water that we have. So maybe a slightly different discussion from this Cascade water discussion on the rate. But I think it's an important piece to always be thinking about, so.
Absolutely.
And, and we, our conservation program remains at historic levels and has been very successful. But that's only one piece of the puzzle. And, you know, on the retail side, the rate signals that you send through your water rates are equally important. And of course, education and information flow is a vital part of that.
Okay, I have so many questions. This is not my expertise. And it's similar to some of my other council members asking. So first of all, I see the dollars on conservation being decreased, the amount spent there. And then coupled with Bellevue's higher-than-projected demands and growth. Shouldn't we be spending more money and trying to educate people on conserving and not using as much?
Yeah, that's a very good question. And one thing that is in the works that may change the conservation budget moving forward is we have been working with a social media firm to develop a whole new outreach program that's more contemporary, shall I say, than some of the outreach mechanisms that Cascade has historically had. One of our big learning experiences over the course of the pandemic was when we held workshops remotely, we about quintupled the attendance that, and participation we got from residents in all of our members' service areas versus holding them at nurseries in person. And so our new model going forward is to have a mix of both remote and in-person venues for these meetings. And our future focus is going to be a bit more directed to the outside water use. And interestingly enough, even though this has been a cool, wet year, Mike Brent, our Conservation Program Director, has had more requests for irrigation audits from commercial entities who are engaged in irrigation, which we take as a sign that they're looking at their water bills from last year and seeing what they could do to lower those. So I would offer you that the budget moving forward, while it is decreasing by a small amount, if we find good, cost-effective opportunities to pursue either in the education or physical investment, we will definitely do that.
Well, that's encouraging. Thank you. I have two more questions. One, I'm a little envious of Redmond and their use of wells. And I look at a map of wells on the east side, and Bellevue certainly has a lot of wells. Why aren't we looking, you know, we're pouring money into this Bellevue-Isoqua pipeline relocation. Why aren't we looking at creating wells for Bellevue?
That's a great question. I will offer you what I know, and this is going to be a limited answer. So in terms of Cascade's membership base, when Cascade was formed, four of our members identified sources of supply that they owned and operated. They're all groundwater sources, and that's Redmond, Samamish Plateau, Isoqua, and Skyway. The other members at the time of the formation didn't have active wells. Ed, I think maybe you can speak to how that might play out if a member decided that they wanted to develop wells.
Sure. Under the Cascade Agreement, members have to coordinate through Cascade to bring on their own new independent supplies. There's kind of a two-level for sources under a million gallons a day. It can be approved directly by the Cascade Board or considered and potentially approved. If it's more than 1 million gallons a day, the source has to be documented and incorporated into our system plan as part of our supply strategy. The goal when Cascade formed was to ensure that Cascade could reliably invest in new supplies and not have members diverging to other sources and undermining the financial stability that was a core need of Cascade. That said, I know the Lake Washington watershed is close to new water rights appropriations. So the idea of getting new water rights for new wells would, it would be an incredibly difficult battle if at all possible. There may be existing water rights and wells that could be put to use if they are still valid. But that, that is held at the local level. So that would be something to bring up with your utility if there are such opportunities. And then come to Cascade if you wish to pursue those.
Okay, thank you. Great answer. So Lucy, I'd be curious to get more information of, if there is any. But my, I'll let you come back to that. My last question is, can, do we anticipate a rate change for our consumers, for our ratepayers? Who pay for water? I know that's not directly under you. But is what we're doing at Cascade going to affect our ratepayers? Our, not the member cities, but the, the public and private?
Yes, of course, if the water utility's paying us more and those increases are of a scale of about 500,000 or 600,000 a year increase, it needs to collect and recover those. It's, it's big enough relative to your system that it wouldn't surprise me that that would be a necessary part of a rate increase. But again, we don't determine at the local level. So maybe Lucy could be more directly responsive there.
Okay, thank you.
I'd be happy to provide information. So the projected 3.4% rate increase in the cost that Bellevue would pay to Cascade in 2023, what that would translate into would be about a 1.7% rate increase to the average ratepayer. That translates to about $1.27 per month to the typical residential bill.
Okay.
And, and for 2024, that, the proposed increase would translate into another 87 cents more in 2024. Mayor, I'm also happy to just provide a brief comment on the wells in Bellevue. Bellevue does have four wells that we maintain for municipal water purposes. And these wells were used back in the, I want to say, the 50s and 60s to actually provide water supply to the lake hills and crossroads neighborhoods, I believe. But these wells have not been in use for a while. Now, in the next budget, city budget, we will be proposing projects to restore and to maintain these wells for nonpotable as well as emergency use. And so that's something that we will be exploring. In addition, we are, we are planning to evaluate options to install additional wells for just emergency use only throughout the service area as part of our potential emergency management plan. So that's an area that we are looking into.
Great. I'll be interested to see what happens with that. Okay, thank you. So we've given feedback. You want something else? Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Lee.
This is a very important occasion for Cascade Water Alliance to brief the city council. And as very, you know, comfortingly, that we have a lot of questions in communication. I think this is great. So I was going to wait until, you know, some more questions asked, but since there was any, so I'm going to ask at least one, if not more than one. I try one first. Something that's not new. We've talked about that before. It's the Water Supply Development Fund. Bellevue City's staff has expressed some interest and concern. And so the question really is, if there's opportunity, the fund was set up, you know, last November 2021. And the question is, will, you know, there's money that's accumulated. And would there be an opportunity to bring it back, discuss it sometime this year? To see if the increased amount over last year's estimate, because it's due to Seattle True-Up Credit, higher RCFCs and surplus in the construction fund. So is there opportunity to discuss it? So maybe there's some conversation between the city utility staff and Cascade Water Alliance. That's one question.
We did, in fact, have a board action last month that related to those shared benefits that you mentioned and moved more money into the fund. We will be reporting to our board next month, actually later this month, on the status of the fund. It's something provided in the code that there's regular reporting and assessment. And this will be the first edition of that. So that'll get our board up to speed. And this information will, of course, be shared with all our members. The Supply Development Fund is an essential part of Cascade being able to fulfill its future obligations to supply water. Barring a path where we never have to build major infrastructure, the scale of projects is such that we simply have to plan ahead for them and build capacity and resources to help fund them. And the small contributions now accumulate into a significant benefit in mitigating costs when such sources are developed.
Thanks for the answer. The importance of me asking is, and the utility staff is asking, is that there's assumptions made, you know, and what the future look like. And as we know, it's, it's not that clear, right? There's some, some moving parts. So perhaps having a discussion, continuing conversation on this would be useful so that, you know, we understand and could discuss the assumptions. So I'm not going to ask you now to what are they, but maybe it's just a opportunity to continue the discussion. One quick second one, that's it, last one, is what, what staff, well, what, in the event of a major infrastructure failure, what are the reserve policies and financial strategy to address the response and recovery costs?
Okay. So in the, I think the best way to talk about that question, the emergency response, is perhaps to give some tangible examples of the things that might most likely occur. So one that's close to home is the Bellevue-Isoqua Pipeline. So that's a major water transmission line that serves Bellevue, Isoqua, and Samamish Plateau. And as we speak, since the beginning of this year, Cascade's been working with member staff, including staff from Bellevue, on a formal emergency response plan that should be completed before the end of this year. As an example, we've had recent landslides with the BIP in Isoqua, where we work closely with Bellevue, Isoqua, and Samamish Plateau District on a response. And what we're trying to do is formalize the roles and the responsibilities of Cascade and member agencies. So that if something untoward should happen, such as a failure or the inability to deliver water, we have the appropriate contacts list on both the operations and communications fronts to notify members and take corrective actions. Down at Lake Taps, our single biggest potential vulnerability is actually with our dikes. So members may not know this, but the formation of Lake Taps actually required the establishment of 15 earthen dikes. All of those are regulated by the dam safety office. We recently just completed our five-year inspection and got high marks from the dam safety office. But why we focus on those dikes is, should those dikes fail, it's going to be a loss of water. And depending on where that failure occurs, it could flood surrounding residential or agricultural areas. So our philosophy is to keep our infrastructure in good enough shape, either through replacement or rehabilitation renewal, so that we minimize the risk of unfortunate things happening with, with that infrastructure. And indeed, a lot of what you'll see in our six-year capital improvement plan is to replace portions of our infrastructure down at Lake Taps that we believe needs to be replaced to keep a reliable system in place.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So we will end this conversation. Thank you very much for being here tonight and for presenting and answering all our questions. And thank you for your representation, Councilmember Barxdale. We will take a break until 10 till, and we'll see you soon. All right, we will resume with our last study session item, Mr. Miyake.
Councilmembers, the final study session topic this evening is the Environmental Stewardship Initiative Quarterly Update. Tonight, staff's going to provide an update on our progress towards implementing the Sustainable Bellevue Environmental Stewardship Plan and the annual update on environmental performance indicators. We have quite a few number of folks joining us this evening. Michael Con, oh, you're not, you're not going to go up there, huh? Okay. Well then, Emile King, Assistant Director, and Jennifer Ewing, Environmental Stewardship Program Manager. Both of them from the Community Development Department. And then Anna Hagerup from Resource Conservation Program Manager from Finance and Asset Management. So I'll get, go ahead and turn it over to the team.
Thank you for the introduction, City Manager Miyake. And good evening, Mayor, and members of council. I'd like to briefly provide a few opening remarks for this agenda item. Implementing the 2021 to 2025 Environmental Stewardship Plan is a key council priority. And we do report back to council on a quarterly basis. Dedicated ESI staff continue to both lead significant work efforts and collaborate with other city departments as well as the community partners on a range of actions. As you'll hear tonight, this is truly a one-city effort that we're undertaking. We're currently about 18 months into the 60-month or five-year implementation phase for this plan. And our focus tonight will be on the community performance measures and the performance measures for the city operations. We'll go into a level of detail tonight that we do once a year based on the data and reporting that becomes available. This is an important time to reflect, to see the overall trend lines, and also assess the effectiveness of our actions that we're undertaking. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jennifer and Anna to provide a presentation on this topic.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, and members of the council. Tonight's presentation, just to reiterate, is for information. We'll focus on our annual performance update, looking primarily at 2021 data for our different environmental metrics, and then touch a bit on some highlights of implementing the Sustainable Bellevue Plan. So as part of the update and adoption of the Environmental Stewardship Plan, there are a number of different environmental performance measures related to climate change, greenhouse gas emissions, energy, mobility and land use, natural systems and waste. The greenhouse gas emissions is kind of the bigger overarching metric important to our council and community. So we'll talk a bit about our performance measures on the community side. And then Anna will speak to the performance measures for our city operations. So to start things off, we did the 2021 Community Greenhouse Gas Emissions Analysis. We compare our progress to the baseline year of 2011. And then, as you remember, we have goals to reduce emissions 50% by 2030 and then 80% by 2050. So for 2021, our emissions were decreased by 20% compared to 2011. That is despite growth in both residents and jobs over that 10-year time period, where both our residential population went up a little over 20% and the number of jobs in Bellevue increased to, I think, 18%. So we are trending in the right direction, but not quite on track for where we should have been in 2021. We should have been at more of like a 25% reduction. You know, and not surprisingly, the, some of the trends for 2020 and 2021, you know, we did see a more significant drop in emissions, and a big part of that was due to COVID. more significant drop in emissions, and a big part of that was due to COVID. Emissions kind of went up a little bit in 2021, maybe not surprisingly, as economic activity and just general activity kind of started to increase compared to 2020. But a lot of the reductions in 2021 were really due to reduced energy use and then also reduced vehicle trips, which we'll talk more about. We've also heard some interest in the wedge analysis. So this was, it's called a wedge analysis because it illustrates the kind of different strategies needed to achieve the greenhouse gas emissions reduction targets, and each strategy or sort of bundle of strategies is considered a wedge. So what it shows on the top line is kind of where emissions would go if we did nothing. And then the strategies on the right-hand side, some of these are kind of a combination of multiple strategies. So looking at how we might, you know, transition to renewable energy, increase energy efficiency in our buildings, you know, there's a number of different strategies or pathways involved in doing some of these different things. So I think what this kind of illustrates is, you know, again, sort of where we could have, in theory, been, you know, with population and job growth and where we're at kind of relative to our targets. And then this also illustrates just what the biggest sort of wedges or buckets are in terms of emissions reductions, and that's really, you know, transportation and buildings. So as part of your packet, we have a summary of all of the different performance measures. This information is also all up on our Environmental Stewardship Performance Dashboard, so we won't have time to go through all of these in detail, but they're included in your packet. It's all online. I guess a couple kind of key things to highlight here, you know, again, the greenhouse gas emissions reductions, the, so we look at the per capita vehicle miles traveled, so the, you know, the car trips per person. We have a goal to reduce those 50% by 2050, which is in line with the state and county goals. Those actually, you know, we exceeded the target on that one. The vehicle miles traveled per capita or per person were reduced by 30% in 2021. So again, that was kind of a big contributor to the emissions reductions. And then total energy use was also down by 8% in 2021, in particular in commercial buildings. The other metric I want to point out here is our tree, well, actually, before we get to tree canopy, just to note, also with energy use, renewable energy also went up slightly as PSE has continued to bring on more renewable sources, in particular with Green Direct, they turned on a wind farm and a solar farm, both in 2021. Okay. And then the last one I'll kind of highlight here is just with the tree canopy, we updated our tree canopy assessment, looking at 2019 as the most recent data. We're still waiting on the 2021 data from the aerial images for that, but it should hopefully be coming later this year. So I'll talk a little bit about the tree canopy, and then we'll switch over to talking a bit about our city operations. Before I kind of just get into the numbers with the tree canopy assessment, I think we just kind of wanted to reiterate, you know, with the tree canopy, 40% goal, you know, that, and similar to some of these other measures are sort of a, it's a metric for us to measure our progress, but it's also kind of a number that we use to help us track where we're at. But some of the bigger overarching goals around tree canopy are really, you know, all about kind of preserving our city and the park character and the unique character of our different neighborhoods, providing habitat, and cooling our neighborhoods in our, both our residential and more commercial neighborhoods. So kind of with all that in mind, we update our tree canopy assessment roughly every five or so years. In the past, you know, we've always tried to use the most current methodology, but that's made it a little hard to compare one year to the, you know, the previous assessment. For this one, we looked at both 2011 and 2019 using the same data sources and methodologies, working with the company Planet Geo that we had worked with on our previous tree canopy assessment. And what we found was the tree canopy, the overall tree canopy increased during that time from 37.5% to 39%. You know, there's a big report attached to the packet that kind of shows the tree canopy by neighborhood, by land use type, by census block group, schools, et cetera. You know, one of the, I think one of the kind of main takeaways that we found with the tree canopy assessment is that, you know, clearly there have been some, there has been loss of trees, you know, in different parts of the city. This map illustrates, you know, in green, those are the parts of the city where the tree canopy has had a net increase. And then the areas in sort of yellowish-brown are the ones where there has been a net decrease in canopy. So basically, what we're seeing is that the, you know, while the overall canopy has grown a bit, you know, in that eight-year timeframe, we are seeing a loss of tree canopy in a big part of the city and, you know, almost half of sort of our land area. So basically, you know, the overall canopy is growing, but there are some losses here and there, and even in neighborhoods where the net canopy has grown, there can still be loss of trees. So I, you know, I think what, in reviewing this data, I think, you know, what we're seeing and thinking is that it still makes sense to look at our tree regulations. I think we've, you know, heard a really strong desire from residents to do that, and I think, you know, we don't, we really want to look at kind of stemming further losses or net losses of canopy, in particular in these neighborhoods, you know, that have experienced more tree canopy loss. So with that, I will go ahead and hand it over to Anna, who will talk a little bit about our municipal operations performance measures.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Robinson, and members of the council for having us tonight. Transitioning from community emissions to greenhouse gas emissions or to municipal operations, I wanted to provide a little bit of context in terms of municipal operation emissions are about 1% of our community-wide emissions, and our whole goal is to go through this process and lead by example for city operations in reducing emissions. So our goal was really to reduce emissions by 25% in 2021. Emissions were decreased to 16%. We saw a similar trend as we did in the community, where 2020 emissions were quite a bit lower. In 2021, we saw a slight uptick in operations. So that's what you're seeing in the graphical trend here. In the pie chart, however, the sources of emissions were relatively similar to 2020 and previous years. We're focusing on buildings and facilities and transportation in terms of our fleet fuel use and our employee commutes. That's really where our largest opportunities are to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So although the trend is slightly up from last year, the sources of emissions and our initiatives to reduce greenhouse gas emissions are very similar to previous years. What you're seeing here is the wedge analysis, similar to the community wedge analysis. What this really does is provide some context about how the certain actions that we're taking at the city level are impacted by regional and state initiatives. The dotted line represents is if we were to do nothing, the growth that we're seeing at the city, where we would go if we chose to not take action. As you can see here, buildings, transportation, and waste, as I already mentioned, are some of our largest sources of emissions. Some of the context that you want to observe through this is CEDA, which is the Clean Energy Transformation Act, mentioned by Jennifer. So that's the grid transition to renewable electricity. We also are complying with the Clean Buildings Act, which established energy use intensity standards for our buildings. So we have about 50 buildings that are going to be required to comply with that new standard. So that's going to improve energy efficiency across our portfolio. We also are seeing benefits from the Renewable Electricity Green Direct program that Jennifer mentioned, which is generating 70% of our renewable electricity for city operations from a wind farm in Olympia and a large solar farm in Eastern Washington. In terms of solid waste, Cedar Grove is expanding their options for seeding compostable products, and that allows us to comply and divert more waste from landfills into compost resources. So that's providing some context here. Again, you're seeing where our target was and where we're at. This just provides context for what's happening at the larger level and emphasizes the necessary partnerships we need in order to be successful in reducing greenhouse gas emissions. So this is the progress that we have made to date. Again, you're seeing the 16% downward trend in greenhouse gas emissions. In terms of employees commuting alone, due to social distancing that was required in 2021, we did see an increase in the drive-alone rate for city employees. We're hoping that that trend will not continue year over year. That is something that we can continue to trend in the opposite direction. For those that are commuting alone, we are installing the electrical infrastructure needed to provide EV charging stations for employees to use. Although we prefer that employees continue to use van pool, public transit, we're excited to see the light rail coming online at City Hall, and we're hoping that we can shift away from the drive-alone method to other public transit opportunities. In terms of fleet vehicles, we saw a significant decrease in gas and diesel being used in our fleet. Some of this is because in-person meetings were not required due to some of the technology that we've been able to use to reduce vehicle miles or vehicle trips between our facility buildings. So reducing the need for that as well as supporting the infrastructure that we need to electrify our buildings so that we can install additional charging stations as we are currently at capacity. This also relates to some of our energy efficiency projects. We currently are implementing six projects through an energy efficiency grant we already received from Commerce. We are supposed to hear this summer about another energy efficiency grant we applied for earlier this year to implement a large retrofit, energy efficiency retrofit at Bellevue Service Center. We also are planning to convert some of our gas equipment into electric equipment so that we can take advantage of the renewable energy that we're purchasing through the Green Direct program, so that we'll also, you know, source our electricity and improve the green grid for our buildings. And we also have several opportunities to install solar through different PSE community solar programs, so we're also looking into taking advantage of those opportunities. Similar to what you heard from Cascade Water Alliance, we did see an increase in water use. It was a very hot summer, so there was an increase there. We do have projects underway, such as the City Hall Plaza renovation, that's significantly reducing water use in those areas. So best practices are being implemented there, and we expect that this will not continue to trend up, that next year we will mitigate this trend as well. And then in terms of the recycling rate trending downwards, recycling rate is both compost and recycling. We're hoping that we can continue to reuse products moving forward after the pandemic and not have to dispose as much PPE and things like that. So we want to, we don't expect that trend to continue.
Okay. Yeah, thanks. So I think on the municipal operations side, the, you know, the two metrics where we were kind of trending away from the target was mostly due to COVID-related operational impacts in terms of, you know, how staff were getting to work last year and just the waste stream in city facilities changing, and then with, on the water side with just the heat dome. So to give you kind of a quick overview of just the plan implementation progress, we are continuing to, you know, progress with implementing the plan. It is a five-year plan, and we're about a year and a half into the implementation, and we have started work on, you know, more than three-quarters of the actions. So making good progress, still more to do. Some of the, you know, notable, more recent accomplishments are the adoption of the Mobility Implementation Plan, led by the Transportation Department, the work on the Parks and Open Space System Plan, direction to begin work on, or to develop the landmark tree permit requirement and ordinance, and then some other exciting projects moving, related to existing buildings, our Clean Buildings Incentive Program, excuse me, where we're working with 124 different, mostly commercial buildings in Bellevue to help them benchmark their energy use and then look for strategies to reduce energy use. And then we're just now really doing the big launch of our heat pump campaign, which is a program with, I've got a tickle in my throat, excuse me, with Kirkland, Redmond, Mercer Island, and Issaquah, where we're partnering with a distributor called Jensco, who will be providing a discount for residents to install heat pumps, and will be providing, excuse me, education workshops and outreach to help promote the benefits of heat pumps and then also, excuse me, take advantage of PSE incentives. Give me one sec. All right. Okay. Excuse me. So in terms of what we're hearing, we, I think, you know, some of these points we've been hearing from our residents over the past several months, folks coming to council and speaking and sending in comments and that sort of thing. We also had kind of a joint town hall last Thursday. So we are working on doing Sustainable Bellevue Community Town Halls twice a year, typically around the beginning of the year and then in the summer. What we decided to do for this past town hall was to merge it with the Comprehensive Plan, what they were calling the Community Deep Dive. So we kind of both wanted to look at the, our different sustainability metrics. So for the Environmental Stewardship Team to report out on our progress and talk about how we're doing with respect to our long-term environmental goals, and then the discussion on the Comprehensive Plan was really, how can we grow and accommodate 35,000 or more residents plus 70,000 jobs and still at the same time, you know, be on track to meet our targets? So we had that event last Thursday, you know, kind of continued to hear just a lot of excitement for all the work that Bellevue is doing, a lot of great conversations around sort of how do we grow sustainably and, you know, accommodate this growth, but also, you know, meet our targets? And then, you know, kind of more discussion around, you know, hearing from the community that they'd like to see us, you know, accelerating our efforts and getting on track to meet our goals. With respect to the desire for more resources, you know, we wanted to note that as part of the biennial budget process, we, you know, have submitted budget proposals to support, you know, the implementation of the plan, both the community actions in the plan and the municipal operations ones. So those are part of the mix of budget proposals that are being reviewed by our leadership team and City Manager's Office to be presented to council this fall. So with that, that concludes our presentation. Again, I just want to reiterate all the information from our presentation is all on our online dashboard and the attachments for tonight's presentation. So if anyone listening in would like more information or wants to refer to the website for more details, and with that, we'd be happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's start with Councilmember Lee.
Well, I'm very, very glad to see that, you know, you are on top of things, making good progress. I like the matrix that you indicated and show. Just a little bit of confusion in some of the areas, trending up, trending down, depending on whether it's good to trend up or good to trend down.
Yeah.
So just a little bit of confusion until I start looking at, you know, what part points to the, you know, improving environment. So maybe it needs a little bit of clarification. The one thing is, you mentioned you have, oh, you have public meetings. You heard that we're not doing fast enough, they still like to see more. But when you see the trend, we are moving in the right direction, we are getting there. So I think there seemed to be a little bit of a discontinuity there. So how do you reconcile, what's causing the people to say that, well, you're not doing enough, we'd like to see faster, or whatever, then we seem to be on the right trend? Do we need to increase our target, or what is your answer? Or what is your answer?
Yeah, I think we we are trending with the greenhouse gas emissions, trending in the right direction, but not quite on track, you know, I think is is the message. So we are not quite reducing emissions fast enough. And then I think what we have seen is, you know, more of a drop in greenhouse gas emissions due to COVID. I I think what we don't know is, you know, what the the data for this year will look like. I think, you know, we're starting to, or we're into the new normal, I guess. You know, I think things are just kind of changing rapidly. So I think we did see a bit of an uptick in emissions from 2020 to 2021. And I I think as we, you know, emerge out of the pandemic, I think we really need to look at how we can sustain some of those reductions. Well, of course, you know, getting the economic activity back up, but also looking at how we can, you know, continue to reduce emissions.
Yeah, maybe that's what's causing the concern of the public.
Yeah.
You know, we cannot depend on the COVID, right? That's the reason for the trending in the right direction. We need to be more intentional, maybe. We might need to figure out after the COVID what we might have to do to keep on moving, you know, in the right direction, which means maybe we have to increase our goals somewhat. I don't know. If that's the case, it can be done. You know, maybe that's what we need to hear. We need to have a conversation. But if we are on the right track, if we can continue to move to our objective, then I guess we're okay. But I think just somehow this that that disconnect, which I'm kind of concerned. We need to, you know, we see people always coming to talk to us. So why are you not doing faster? You need more people. You need more resources, you know. So what is it? Yeah, thanks.
Okay, Councilmembers on?
Yes. Thank you, Meel, Jennifer, and Anna. I am very excited to see our wedge analysis and really be informed by data about what we're doing. I know that we've talked about a belief that we that we're we're not quite at the numbers and that we were going to increase, we're going to need to increase resources. But I think it's always good to to see what the numbers actually tell us. And certainly what we saw in here is that in 2020, when we were in this, in the right in the midst of COVID, the numbers actually were trending in the right direction at a steep enough rate that we were on track. But then what we see in 2021 is that the the number is not actually trending in a way that if we stay with the same slope, we're not going to hit 50% by 2030, both in our municipal and in our community usage. So I do think that this gives us that call to action, which we saw in the report in the progress summary, that we need to, we need to keep doing what we're doing, which I'm really appreciative of all of your efforts. And yet we need to accelerate the pace of the work that we're doing. And so I agree with you, having the Parks and Open Space levy and hopefully getting more of those projects, the MIP, the Tree Canopy, the comp plan, those are all going to help the next right work for housing. Happy to see that the Tree Canopy, we're going from 37% to 39%, although we've seen losses, as you've said. What I would like to better understand is, as you look at the wedge analysis, is there a way for us to show what percentage of the allocation of reduction we're expecting from these different strategies? So we can better pinpoint if we're not hitting the mark, where amongst these different strategies do we need to put our foot on the gas pedal quicker? Because it could be that out of the dozen things, eight of them are doing really well, but these four are the ones we really need to highlight. So I'd like to better understand what that is. And and then how we might work with the community and the businesses to to help us move even faster. And then our own municipal with our own employees. When I looked at the packet of the the report, certainly what I see is that there are some areas that potentially, as we look at the One Bellevue, One City approach, right? The curb management that we're working on, the the parking review, which looks like we're not doing until 2024, that's M 1.4. So maybe some of those, those M ones, we could look at accelerating sooner to better align with the work that we're doing. And then, you know, Mike Carterman and I spoke briefly about the, as we look at advancing the green building and green affordable housing and solar, I think we also spoke briefly about M 1.3, which is the climate sustainability and land use and neighborhood planning and whether in the comp plan, some of the 1099 elements could be incorporated, which has pieces associated with climate change. So, you know, what I see is that this is a moment where there's a lot of the things we're working on from a policy level that really dovetail into this work and how we accelerate even faster. So I'm excited to see what you've proposed in terms of our 2023 budget and where some of the, what some of the needs are from perhaps both the resource and the capital side to help us move even faster. I am excited to see all of the work underway. And at the same time, I think there's more we could be putting our foot on the accelerator in. So I don't know that I have anything in particular. I don't want to dig in the details. I want it to stay at the policy level. But really, just urge you to take a pretty bold look at what the ask is and make sure that we are using this data to inform us about how to move even faster. So thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Did you have any response to that or?
I think on that one, we have some good notes about ideas for looking at some of the actions in the current plan.
Okay, Councilmember Brexdale.
All right, thank you, Mayor. I think my points have already pretty much been addressed. It was going to be about what I raised last time and what Councilmembers on mentioned in terms of how we focus on the most impactful actions as well. And I think that's where I'll leave it. I don't have a, I'd be interested in how we can show that a little bit more to in the dashboard. I know we have the actions. And I, I appreciate to see in the short-term outcomes, like the percentage. And would really like to see more of those trends over over time. So I think that's all I have.
Okay, Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, thank you. I agree with the comments made so far on this. And and I I hear your response to some of the concerns that have been raised, and I think you're you're working on that. There's one way to look at this. You look at these charts and and it's, it's kind of disheartening in the sense that we may be going in the right directions, but, you know, going down a little bit and it's still up here. We're going the right direction, but the direction needs to be, and how sooner. And what I'm, it seems like we're in in one of these phases where we had a plan several years ago, and we're going to get there by, you know, 2050 to this and that. The reality is, things are going to happen way before that time. And whether this is a point we really need to look at, again, as colleagues have said, what are the most important parts to get to? And I'm just not, it's not, I know it's making progress, but having it kind of going just like this stair stepping down is getting there, but it's going to take forever, and we don't have forever. And I guess what I'm asking is, do we need to have another look at what what are the most important things we can do? And how do we have a better sense of how we can make these things happen quicker? And unfortunately, you know, 2021 don't seem to make a lot of sense. I mean, I think it's hard to actually measure anything based on that time period just because it's it's odd and we don't know. We still really don't know what it's going to be like going forward. But I think the urgency between when we came up with this plan and now has changed dramatically. And and I think you're, you know, really working hard on and focusing on what we need to do. The question is, how do we, how do we implement? How do we make it actually happen? And so we don't look back in 2040 and say, oh, my gosh, gee, we thought we were going to get there and we didn't get there, and what could we have done? So I just think it's a lot more, it's going to take, it's going to take some more staffing. I'm not, you know, I'm not saying you need to hire 10 people or whatever, but maybe some refocusing on what are the most important things that we need to achieve? And how do we have, you know, use the staff for that? Just some realizing that, you know, we're not in 2017 anymore. We're not, we're in different concepts, and we don't even know what's going to happen in terms of buildings and all these things. So it's difficult. But having plans for 20, you know, 10, 15 years out and the chart, if you make, if you get to success, it's going to come down like this, but we're still coming like this. And so to get from here to here is a big leap if we just keep edging along. And so I'm, I'm, I think it's, and the conversation in the community is a lot better. I think we're getting support. It's very positive on moving forward. But I'd like to see us actually come up with even a really robust and energetic goal. How can we actually do this in a reasonable time period? Because, again, we don't want to, you know, end up at a certain time period and say, gee, we tried, but it didn't work. And I just think you have a lot of great ideas, a lot of stuff we're working on, and I would like to see more emphasis on that. How do we coordinate better? And I'm in favor of, and I'm glad you're looking at some staffing. I think probably won't take that much, but something to help, you know, moving forward. Because we've given you something that's five years old now, basically, that looked interesting then. But looking at, we're not going to get to this goal in 2050 is, we may not even be able to, you know, have to work on a goal by the time. So I think we have to look at it from that standpoint, that it's more urgent than we're we're putting into it. So, but I think we have the, I think we have the resources, and I think we have the attitude to make it work. But we have to really say, we want to get there and we really mean it. And I don't think we're doing it quite yet. But again.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So can, do you think you can comment on the value of increasing the staff to work on this? And we we have a budget cycle coming up, so that could be part of our discussion. What would be the value of that or what would be the impact of that?
Yeah, I think Michael wanted to offer up a few words on that.
I was going to try to stay quiet. I I think the short answer is we really need to look more at the programs. It's not necessarily about the number of staff. It's about the programs that we're putting in place to have the effects that you're asking for. So once we have, once we identify those and look at the level of effort that's needed, then we can look at what staffing is required to handle those. So, and that's part of the budget discussion that'll be coming to you in the fall. And I think to Councilmember Stokes' point and others as well, I think one thing to keep in mind about this is we are making good progress. We are not on track, as we'd like to be, certainly, but we're also gaining momentum. We're one and a half years into a five-year plan. So we're looking at it from that standpoint as well. We know where the triggers are, and we're looking at how we can increase our efforts in those areas.
Great. Okay, so I have some questions of my own. One is, do you think we should be increasing our Tree Canopy goal? Do you think the goal that we set was high enough?
I think that's something we might, we need to give more thought to.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And number two, I just personally have been so frustrated by recycling. I know that when I talk to the people at Republic, it sounds like the number is 70% of recycling gets put into the landfill because people do it incorrectly. I mean, there are other countries that don't have compliance requirements to do successful recycling or disposal in an environmentally friendly way of of trash. And so I just wonder, is there any effort to educate the community more or to create a more user-friendly program so that we can be more successful in that area? Or should we all go to paralysis or however you say that?
I mean, I think our Utilities Department does a lot of work in terms of educating around, I think they call it recycling, right? I think more recently, I I think we could, you know, follow up with them to get more specifics. But I think, you know, that contamination issue is is definitely something that a lot of our outreach is looking to address. I think the waste streams have kind of changed a little over the past two years with COVID. And I think people's patterns have changed a bit, so I think.
Empty, clean, and dry. Right?
What's that?
Empty, clean, and dry.
Yes, yes. Yeah. So, yeah, I think that is a big aspect of their their outreach and education programs.
I mean, people may be working really hard on this, but it's really quite a failure, to be honest with you. And so I'd be very curious to know what we could do differently to make that more successful.
Okay.
Any other thoughts?
We do randomly audit sometimes the municipal trash to see what the contamination rate is, to make sure that people are recycling correctly. So sometimes that actually is a service that has been provided by utilities as well. And, you know, I think just in the industry, there is some confusion about the compostable plastic versus the regular plastic. So now Cedar Grove has expanded their options to accept more commercially recyclable or compostable products. So that's one way to eliminate having to rinse or, in in situations where you don't have a sink to rinse, you could just use compostable products, as long as it's clear that it all goes in the compost and isn't trying to decide between compost and recycling. So there are some some event-specific things that we can implement to to prove that. But it's it's an ongoing process. I don't think that'll ever end. I think we'll constantly have to educate everyone on the current practice.
Well, I appreciate what you're doing at the municipal level because I see that and I see more compostable products that are being used. So it is easier, but outside of what we're doing here, what we're doing in our homes is the hard part, especially for multifamily living that doesn't always have compost.
One other thought, and we can follow up with utilities on this, is that that may be the contamination rate for all of the recyclables. So in theory, the recyclables coming from Bellevue might have less contamination, but then they're mixed in with all the other recyclables that, you know, go through Republic. And so I don't know if, I'd have to check. I don't know if we have Bellevue-specific data on that.
I'm like a proud mother. Okay, well, that's, that's great. Those were my only two comments and questions. Thank you for all your work. Really appreciate it and looking forward to the next update.
Thanks.
Oh, goodness, maybe you should. You were supposed to go after Councilmembers on. I'm sorry.
I was hoping to get out of here while it was still light, so I'll try to be quick. That's okay. No, so I I appreciate the comments about trying to do things that are meaningful. I would join my colleagues with that. And I know we're only 30% into this five-year, yet we're, we've started or are well underway on 79%. I think that, I think that, I mean, I want to focus on the good, right? Let's focus on that. And I think that I'm really appreciative that you guys showed where we were making the goal better because of the pandemic or maybe falling short because of the pandemic, because that was a real impact. I think that that's helpful. But, you know, how has Bellevue always done stuff in a systematic way? How do you eat an elephant, a bite at a time? But let's find the best bites where we can really, you know, make sure that we make make a difference. So I had a couple of, one ask and a question. So on the greenhouse gas reduction of 20% over the last 11 years, I actually think that's pretty good considering we've grown our residents population by 28,000 and our jobs by 24,000. I would be very interested to see the per capita, whether, you know, whether we lump jobs and and population in together or whether we break it out by per capita, per jobs, per capita, per people. I think that that's really meaningful because the only really, you know, one way we could really bring down our greenhouse gas emissions and that's just kill our economy, right? I mean, and have everyone move away. I mean, that's, and that's not what we want to do. So the the trick is going to be making sure that we have a per capita reduction, and that will help us with an overall reduction. So I think that would be helpful. It also can give some agency to people thinking, okay, this is the per capita. I'm going to do better, right? I mean, remember we had that Yeti, you know, Green Team thing, like, be a carbon Yeti? I think that that would be helpful, so I'd like to track that. If we're, are we tracking that?
We have, yeah, we have the per capita on the dashboard. I don't know that we have goals around like a percent reduction, but, yeah, we can.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd be curious next time you guys come back to get that number. And then my question, that's my ask. My question was about Slide seven, about that big brown spot. To me, that looks where we've lost 20, 15 to 22% Tree Canopy. That's Mercer Schlue, isn't it? That's the sound transit. That's the Sound Transit project, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay. So have they replanted? They're replanting, right?
They are replanting.
They better be.
I'm not sure exactly sort of where they're at with that.
Okay, yes. Okay, because I mean, you know, eventually, I mean, the carbon output of building light rails significant, but then over time, it saves. So I assume that this, that the tree canopy, yes, it got taken down in that area, which is very stark, that's the biggest wetland in King County and it's just, but with the reduction of tree canopy. But if they're replanting, then hopefully that will green up over time.
Yep.
Thanks.
I think it's all replanted. I live by there and I drive by, it looks really good.
Good.
Small. Councilmembers on?
Yes, I really appreciate all the comments from my colleagues and I was just thinking about, right, all of the comments we've made about how do we really focus on the most important aspects that are the most meaningful? And I might suggest that similar to affordable housing, where we were doing steady, good work, just like our environmental stewardship, and yet as we tried to identify the next right work, you created a table that shows a level of effort and impact and perhaps that's one way that you've already used to help us really hone in on all of these things, where are the areas that's going to give us the most impact now to drive down the greenhouse gas emissions? So happy to entertain any other things, but it was just something that you recently came on that and I think that we found that very helpful in terms of using that as a tool to understand. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, I agree. Good comment. Okay. Well, thank you very much for the presentation and for the conversation. We are adjourned.